All right, I call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Kobos Smith.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Great, so excited to start off with some recognitions today. So thank you all for joining us today. And I'll turn it over to our staff maybe to begin some of the recognition.
Can you hear me? You can hear me. I'd like to welcome up first our Teacher AUSD's Teacher of the Year, Christine Copey. If you'll come on up. I'd like to say a few things about her. She is a kindergarten teacher at Sutter Elementary. She's got her fans here. Has been named the 2025 AUSD Teacher of the Year for her dedication, innovation, and exceptional teaching. With 25 years in Antioch Unified, Christine has taught various grade levels and recently transitioned to kindergarten to help build a strong learning foundation for young scholars. She excels in differentiated instruction, integrates social-emotional learning, and implements rigorous academic strategies to support student growth. Her commitment is evident in her use of programs like UFLI, Hagerty, and Secret Stories to enhance literacy skills. Beyond her classroom, Christine is a leader and mentor, actively contributing to grade level PLCs, the Guiding Coalition, and professional development. She fosters strong relationships with families, supports school-wide initiatives, and engages in after-school literacy programs through the HEROES program. Christine's ability to inspire, lead, and connect make her a truly deserving recipient of this honor. She embodies the spirit of an outstanding educator, leaving a lasting impact on her students, colleagues, and the community. And we were just chatting before this ceremony and recognition, and she was sharing how her kindergarteners are feeling very, very proud of their ability to write in full sentences. And they are showing off. And so I just want to thank you for all you do for our district and our students. Lovely flag and then a little thing to keep it safe and a certificate. And I think we'll take pictures with the board after.
After, yeah, we'll do it.
Our runner-up isn't here, so can I read about the runner-up?
Yeah, I think that would be great, yeah.
I would love to do that. All right, so our runner-up was Latisha Williams. She's a special education student or educator/teacher at Dallas Ranch Middle School and has been recognized as the 2025 AUSD Teacher of the Year Runner-Up for her dedication, expertise, and unwavering commitment to student success. With over nine years at Dallas Ranch Middle School, Latisha has consistently demonstrated exceptional skills in supporting students with special needs. She is highly proficient in developing and implementing individualized education plans, adapting teaching methods to diverse learning styles, and integrating innovative educational technologies to enhance student engagement. She's compassionate and patient. Her patience sets her apart as she builds strong relationships with students, creating an inclusive and nurturing classroom environment where every student feels valued. She also excels in collaboration and communication, working closely with educators, staff, and parents to ensure a cohesive support system for her students. As a teacher leader, Latisha shares her knowledge with colleagues and actively contributes to the professional growth of her team. Her problem-solving skills and ability to remain calm under pressure further highlight her leadership qualities. I hope she stops by later. She has energy that lights up a room, so hopefully she'll be here. But I want to give her a congratulations.
All right, good evening, Board and AUSD staff in the audience and community members. I think it's appropriate that we're celebrating our classified employees tonight that are being recognized for Classified Employee of the Year during Classified Employee Week. So it was good timing for this board meeting. So as you all are aware, classified employees provide a valuable service to the schools and students of the Antioch Unified School District by playing a vital role in providing for the welfare, safety, and nurturing of students through their school years and by assisting in providing a positive learning environment through their commitments, their hard work, their professionalism, and their good customer service. To recognize and honor classified employees, the district, and the Personnel Commission, select an employee as the representative of all the outstanding classified employees in the Antioch Unified School District. This individual is determined through a process of nominations by peers and staff members, paper screening, and then a selection committee. I had the honor for the last three years, two and a half years in my position, to sit on this committee with Personnel Commissioner and representatives from CSEA. And it is a huge honor and really just a grounding and affirming experience to listen to classified members tell their stories and their why behind the work that they do. And it really does kind of just bring me back to the reason why I chose to be in education. So our first finalist is Lakeisha, Keisha Jarvis. So Keisha is at Antioch High School, and she is a site safety coordinator, my alma mater, so near and dear to my heart. Keisha has been with the district for over 20 years. She's been a constant force of safety on Antioch High School's campus. Many of the students look up to her as a positive example and a second mom. She constantly redirects students and never gives up, no matter what obstacles she might face. She connects with the students and lets them know she cares about them. She keeps tabs on them and helps them stay focused on going to class and learning. Keisha says, "It has truly been a blessing for me to have the opportunity to work at AUSD. Whether they're happy, sad, or angry, the students know they could come to me without hesitation. Being that person for them has made this job worth it, and it's a reminder of the positive impact we can have on each other's lives. I'm not just in this for the income, it's for the outcome." Congratulations. Good. Thank you. The board for you, and then the board will want to take some photos for you after.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. All right, our second finalist is Jenna Marquesi Osborne. So Jenna has actually held several roles in the district, but her current role is at Park Middle School as a restorative practice facilitator. Jenna has been with AUSD for over three years, again, working as a restorative practice facilitator at Park Middle School. In this role, she has fostered a positive work environment, organizing staff, team-building events, and goes above and beyond her regular duties. She takes the initiative to mentor students, helping them integrate smoothly back into our school community after conflicts. Jenna also approaches conflicts with a creative mindset to devise solutions that improve processes and increase productivity, which has been evident with the Alternative to Suspension Program that's been implemented at Park Middle School. Jenna states, "I feel very fortunate to be able to work as a classified employee at AUSD. Our students get to see me show up for them when they need support. They get to see me be an example of the kind of adult who listens without judgment and who can laugh with them. Helping mold our future generation into more compassionate, educated, and kind humans is the greatest reward." Jenna. When I sit on panels and listen to the stories for this recognition, I always tell myself I'm not going to cry or get emotional, but the power of the impact that these three employees and a lot of our classified employees have is just remarkable. So again, this year I told myself I wasn't going to cry on the panel while I listened, and I did. So her Melinda, Melinda Ramirez, is our Classified Representative of the Year. Melinda has been with the district for over 14 years. Melinda has been an IA bilingual, a School Office Assistant One bilingual, and is now a School Administrative Assistant, High School VP at Deer Valley High School in their administrative building. Melinda has a calm and cool personality oriented towards organization, problem-solving, and helping others. Deer Valley High School would not function without her. Melinda supports the student, staff, and the surrounding community with her ability to emphasize, understand, and follow through. She is always willing to help others, and if she doesn't know the answer, she will point you in the right direction of someone who does. Melinda states, "I have been impacted by the students in such a way that I want better for them. I continue to learn and teach others who could use advice that may change their lives. Out of everything, I believe creating a trusting environment that has been my greatest contribution. Watching students walk across the stage at graduation, come back, and update me with visiting families, jobs, and more makes my DVHS journey well worth it and rewarding." Classified Representative of the Year, Melinda Ramirez. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think we also have recognition of our high school student representatives.
I believe there was a little bit of a miscommunication. So we do have one student here now, but the rest, I believe, will be coming at 7:00. So, I know. So I think to honor their time, if we can go ahead and recognize this one, and if the board doesn't mind, we'll recognize the others once the regular board meeting begins. Okay. So I would like to welcome up Michaela Thomas for her service.
We appreciate you being a representative at your board.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so for the mother of Isabella, I'm gonna say it right, Ipo- Ipo-lito.
Okay.
She's gonna come up and accept on her daughter's behalf because I believe she's doing a graduation -- oh, promotion practice, so.
Great, well, I'll maybe give my colleagues a chance in case they have comments or anything on any of those three.
Yeah, so I just want to say congratulations to everyone for just pouring out your hearts in the capacity that you do it in and just hearing a piece of your why. I know that wasn't the whole story, but just a glimpse of it. And Michaela, thank you. Thank you. She's actually on the bus with my daughter, and my daughter adores her. To get her on the bus in the morning, we have to say Michaela's gonna be there, and she's waiting for you. And so I had no idea that, I mean, I knew that we were doing celebrations and stuff like that, but I just want to say, in spite of who I am, who my daughter is, you still treated her like she wasn't a part of a school board member. And you do that for all of your students, and that says a lot. And I know that the world needs a Michaela, and so congratulations.
Any other comments?
I would.
Yeah, Vice President Rocha.
I just want to say that it's always a pleasure seeing our people come up and get at least appreciated because you're just one of the many that you represent. And so many of our people keep this business going, if we want to call it a business of education. We talk about teachers, but the classified, those are the smiles that you receive every day. And of course, a teacher, when you see your teacher, but the classified seems to be the ones that are the people that give us the, oh, we're getting the best of everything because of your smiles. And thank you very much. Keisha, you know I've known her for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan?
Thank you for, to all the educators, teachers, classified support staff, and Michaela, and Ms. Liz. So it's interesting because Michaela volunteered at the Second Annual STEM Event on May 3rd, gave of her time and her energy, and she did it with a smile and grace and worked with children at the event. We had over 500 people, and she was just gracious the whole time, so thank you. And then Ms. Liz, I don't know if I've ever met your daughter, but if she is anything like you, she is awesome. You are a fantastic role model, so thank you.
So I don't have any deep connections with anybody. I would just say, I do want to say though, I've, you know, I think by now everybody knows we're in the Special Ed Ad Hoc Committee, and we started off with a focus group. And I've been theming and going through the data, and I was just struck by the depth of experience, compassion, kindness, just care for our children. And I had no idea what this was. And so I'm very, coming from the thematic analysis and then seeing your faces, just really warms my heart because my granddaughter's whole education trajectory is here today. We have a representative from Sutter, we have somebody from Park, and we have somebody from Deer Valley, and that just, oh God, I didn't think I was gonna get teared up, but it just touches me deeply that my granddaughter has such loving, kind people around her for her educational journey. So thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, thank you to everyone. I think that was honored today. I think one of the things that it just clearly reflects, and clearly reflects in both the comments made and the stories, is that we have such great people here in the school district. And I think just the important part that I always try to remember is that you all are the ones that are doing the work each and every single day, there day after day, with each of the students here. You are the people that, you know, as an alumni from the school district, like, you know, that gets our students to where they want to be, that makes our students' dreams come true, and all of that is part of making sure that our students get to live the lives that they deserve. So, you know, I think not only are you exemplary in the work that you do, but you are an example of the work that many of our staff do day after day, because I know that it was not easy to select, you know, these people year after year because we just have so many great people to choose from. So thank you all for the work that you do each and every single day. So what we'll be doing next is, so we'll take some pictures with everyone who received awards today. We have some refreshments in the hallway. Let's try to save some few for those students that weren't able to make it here quite on time. I'll also, at this time, read out our closed session items, because I think we'll likely reach that closed session time as we're taking photos and making that process. I want to make sure everyone's aware of our closed session items, and then we'll come back to open session around 7:00 PM. So our two closed session items is Item A, Public Employment Superintendent, and Item B, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Agency Designated Representative, Board President, Unrepresented Employee Superintendent. Great, so we'll go ahead and take some pictures. Feel free to start enjoying some of the refreshments out in the hallway, and we'll come back for open session at 7:00 PM. come back for open session at 7:00 PM.
Great, so I call the meeting back to order at 7:10. Maybe we'll do items from A through C and then we'll jump into recognizing our student representatives. So Mike, can you establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Present.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Then moving on to item B, reports from closed session. So during the closed session, no reportable action was taken on the item related to the appointment of a new superintendent. The board is actively engaged in finalizing the selection in terms of employment for the district's next superintendent. We recognize the community's strong interest in this process and appreciate your continued engagement. As required by law, any employment contract for this senior leadership position must be presented and approved at a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. So we anticipate revisiting this topic at the upcoming regularly scheduled board meeting. If additional information becomes available before then, we will share it with community as appropriate. So thank you so much for your continued support and patience as we complete this important process. And so let's go ahead and move on to recognizing our student representatives.
So the students that we are recognizing this evening have appeared before the board over the last school year and shared wonderful things about what was going on on their campuses. They did an amazing job and we want to recognize them and appreciate them for what they do, not just here at the board meeting, but also in their leadership roles back at their sites. So first up, we have Chloe Liang. She's from Dozier Libby Medical High School. From Antioch High, Kayla Ni Torres. Also from Antioch High, Fafita Gru. Also from Antioch High, Natalie Renton. And last but not least, from Antioch High, Kelsey Gilbert.
Great, well, thank you so much to all of our student representatives. I think, you know, the work that we do here as a school board is on service of students. And so when you bring the perspectives and what's going on, that really is what, one, gives us an insight into what's actually happening in the schools and the experiences that you all are having. And then, two, ensures that, you know, the decisions we're making up here reflect the needs of students. So thank you for taking your time to come here at, you know, 7:00 PM on a Wednesday to share about your experiences in school. I know that that's a time when you could be working on homework, getting time to relax, spending time with your family. So taking time out of your day, because I know you're all exceptional students who spend a lot of time succeeding and doing really amazing things. So we're very appreciative of all that.
I want to know, I want to know how many are graduating? Wonderful. Congratulations.
Great, well, any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move on to C, flag salute. Trustee Kobo Smith, can you lead the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to D, approval of board minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of March 19th, 2025. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented unless there's any comments or changes.
I move approval.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
A second.
So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting of March 19th, 2025. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to E, approval of board minutes for the special Board of Education meeting of March 26, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to approve minutes as presented.
I move approval.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the special Board of Education meeting of March 26, 2025. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. And then item F, approval of board minutes for the special Board of Education meeting of April 8th, 2025. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move approval.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 5A, superintendents' report. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Wayne.
Thank you, Board President Hernandez. Good evening, everyone. I always appreciate this opportunity to highlight the many exciting things happening in Antioch Unified. Over the course of my comments this year, I've shared about a number of programs where we've, you know, support students. And I want to highlight one more. Do we have the presentation on the screen? Get it on, please. This is the Avid program. And we hosted our first annual Avid Family Night on May 6th. And so Avid is a program, it stands for Advancement Via Individual Determination. And it supports students in being, graduating college and career-ready. And it's at all of our comprehensive high schools and middle schools, and we also did it at three elementary schools. And so at the family night, the students shared their skills and knowledge that they're gaining from being in Avid. And then there were fun activities that they engaged in. You can go to the next slide just to get a sense of what it was like. And, you know, and I shared how Avid, although it's advancement via individual determination, it's actually a course that students take and they get to know their classmates and they have an advisor. So it really creates a strong sense of community that you could feel there on May 6th at Antioch High School. And so one more slide shows just the different kind of displays and events that the students and families participated in. So kudos to the Ed Services team for hosting this and appreciate the work in our schools to make this program a reality for our students. Next slide. Also very excited to announce that Antioch is going to receive a community schools grant. The district in 2022 received a planning grant and now they're getting a grant for full implementation. And so community schools is an approach, yeah, that supports serving the whole child. And as a superintendent to other districts, I've had the privilege of leading this framework and just see how it really supports the connection between the families, the students and the staff, and with the community. So leveraging resources and services that are in our community to support our students. And so for the next year, it's going to be implemented at Antioch High School and Antioch Middle School. But the district smartly included in the grant the funding to be able to support activities at a parent hub. So there can be a central place for parents to come and receive services from the district. It can be a lot navigating a district the size of Antioch. So this is a way to have a central location for families to have their needs met. So congratulations to the district for earning that. Yeah, that's worth a big round of applause. And it's for $3 million that we're getting. So this is, really will be a good, significant investment.
Five years.
Yeah. And also, I had the opportunity to go with the Educational Services team to Los Madanos College for one of their convenings with the other districts in the area that partner with them. And we're really proud of our partnership with them. We work with them to have students go to college-connected events. You heard us report at the last meeting about our dual enrollment classes. And they help support our career pathways as well. And I was at the student union there that has been recently renovated. And it's this amazing space, and so they've actually partnered with us so that the beginning of next year, we will have our professional development retreats at our days at the Los Madanos College. And so we'll have our administrators there, our teacher PD days there, as well as student activities that will be happening there. And really, when we talk about being a district that wants our students to graduate college and career-ready, it's a really nice environment for them to see, for our students to see what it's like being at a college and for our staff to have this in mind, that this is what we're working with our students to achieve. So we're excited about that partnership. And, you know, we are, if you go to the next slide, at the time of year where we start celebrating all the accomplishments from the year and for some people for their career. So tonight, we celebrated our student representatives and our classified and certificated employees of the year. And next meeting, you'll hear reports from our graduations. But tonight, I want to highlight that we had a retirement celebration for, you know, dedicated, certificated and classified staff. Want to appreciate Board Trustee Rocha there for representing the board. And we celebrated staff who had 15, 20, 30-plus years of experience in the district, giving to our students and our families. And so it's just an honor to be among the educators who have devoted their careers and their lives to this profession and to this district. And they will definitely be missed and we wish them the best in retirement. So that concludes my report for the evening. Thank you very much.
Great, moving on, the next item we have on our agenda is seven public comments. We have seven A individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. The first comment we have is from Carl Modesto.
I promised my daughter I was going to say this long, two-minute message. And she told me that less is more. And I said, okay. My name is Dr. Carl Modesto. I was fortunate enough to be born in Canada. And my wife, who's outside there, she's from the US, you guys know what that means. I had to make the move because she wasn't going to come to the core. But the one thing I learned from coming here is the discrepancy in services. And it's just shocking to me. I don't see equity in the services that you give. And I'm looking at this thing that you're doing there and I'm like, I want to believe it, but it seems like a dream. Because when I look around, there is no equity in the service. Some special ed kids are sent to programs where they have psychiatric services, right? And those kids have psychiatric needs, perfect, they do well. Some kids are sent with the same psychiatric needs to programs with no psychiatric service. What are we setting them up to do? What are they going to be in five years, in 10 years? And then when they fail, we say, oh, I wonder why? Why would we, as a special ed unit, send kids to a program who have known psychiatric issues to a program that doesn't have it? And when I ask, well, how do you treat kids who have psychiatric needs in a non-psychiatric programs? Oh, we just drive them to Kaiser. That was the response from the non-public school. We just drive them to Kaiser. I'm looking at each and every one of you. You are brought in to make changes. People like myself are trusting you to make that change. And change isn't easy. People love the way things are. You need to make them uncomfortable. They're too comfortable. And let me just say this. Last time I checked, some of our special ed people, directors and stuff, are some of the highest-paid people in the entire area. So it's not a money thing. It's a will and a purpose. And if they don't have it, I need you guys. And if they don't have it, I need you guys to have it. Strip it down and build it back up. Plain and simple. Strip it down and build it back up. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming up here and sharing your thoughts. And I think I'll share just, you know, regularly that because of the way that meetings are, we can't actively engage in like back-and-forth comments for these public comments. But I encourage you to reach out to our superintendents and us because I know that this is something that this board has been putting active work into. So, well, we can't have that conversation now. I'm sure that myself and many other board members here are happy to continue that conversation. Moving on to 7B individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. First, we have Amber Deegan.
All right. Hello. So I had just had a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. Technology in our schools. Technology has become very difficult. And the way that technology is being implemented in our schools is actively making our lives harder, not easier. I would love to know why that is because I thought technology was supposed to make our lives easier, and instead it's, it's becoming a humongous issue. I'm not talking about class phones in the classrooms. I'm talking about the technology that the district provides to us. We had severe printing problems at Fremont Elementary School. Before we got our new copier, our printer was old, jammed frequently. And so our solution was to say, hey, let's spend site funds. And I don't know how many of you guys in here know how precious site funds are. There's not a lot of it. So the fact that we were willing to spend site funds on this should speak to the need. So we got classroom printers for our school with site funds. And technology came a few weeks ago and took all of them and e-wasted them, even though they were barely a year old. Many of them had brand-new ink cartridges in them. And it would be nice if we were reimbursed for that money. That site funds are very difficult to come by. Those printers were expensive. And I don't, we weren't really given a choice. We got new printers, but now they're being restricted. We have a budget, and once we go over that, it will restrict us from printing. That's the next thing I wanted to talk about. That's absurd. Then the amount of paper that I see wasted just on a regular basis when I go to LCAP meetings and the whatnot, nobody's saying, oh, you need to stop doing that. But when it comes to teachers in my classroom doing my job, just trying to, just trying to skate by and do my job. Printing is like a bare-bones, basic need that we need. And the fact that I am being prevented from cup, making colored copies and now just regular copies is absurd. So I'm here because I don't know what to do. The restrictions are absurd. I need to be able to print. That's literally part of my job to be able to print. I don't understand these restrictions. They make no sense to me. I can't color copy unless I go through some onerous way to make that happen, and then I can't also make regular copies. So you've got me through a rock and a hard place. Do I need to go buy my own printer and use my own ink and use my money to make copies for my classroom? Because that's kind of where I'm at now. That's ridiculous. I shouldn't have to do that. I only have 15 seconds left, so I want to once again reiterate the need for dyslexia-specific services. Dyslexia is something that's real. This district frequently denies that its existence. It doesn't assess for it, and we need to be able to do that. So dyslexia, please, let's focus on that, too. All right. Thanks. Bye.
Next, we have Jeremy Martin.
Hello. Good evening, board members, Dr. Wayne, superintendent, and district administrators. My name is Jeremy Martin, also known as Senor Martine. I'm a Spanish teacher at Deer Valley High School. I wanted to introduce myself, provide a context for learning, and make a request of board administration. To introduce myself, I have taught at Deer Valley High School for 10 years. I love teaching and creating engaging lessons and activities. In terms of our context for learning, our district contracted with NCUST, the National Center for Urban School Transformation, to provide an observation of our campus. This NCUST report provided valuable feedback from experts about what they saw as strengths and areas for growth at our campus at Deer Valley. I appreciate the recommendations to teach to mastery, to have a no-op-out culture, and increase student attendance through engagement. In light of our incoming principal at Deer Valley and our incoming superintendent, I'm asking the board and district personnel in their supervisory roles to task DVHS administrators to implement suggestions found in the NCUST report, especially in terms of providing classroom observations and feedback. As a teacher, I can follow recommendations, but I can't speak to my bosses. So it's sometimes exhausting to be presented with new ideas and not have them carried through with. So I actually really like the NCUST report. It has great ideas. And so I just invite us all to work together to, as we have new administration at Deer Valley, to continue the great recommendations. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Sarah Nave.
Good evening, everyone. Sarah Nave from Antioch High School. I, we get to the end of the year, and I hear a lot of things. As I've been on exec board for the union for almost 20 years now, a lot of things come to my attention. One of those things was evidently, and it's sort of a yearly thing now we do, shuffling of people who work closely with kids and their emotional needs, whether they are district psychs, counselors, whether they're academic counselors, emotional counselors. They are employees of the district. I'm, I am aware of that. I, I know. You know, the, yes, the school district has the right to place them where they feel it is necessary. I know. It, it's not a contract violation. I know. It's not a contract violation. It's still not right. And that's why I had to say something tonight. At the end of the day, all the reasons, all the, you know, whatever you want to throw at me, you tell me why you're doing it. Kids are the ones who have to now start over next year and make new relationships with another adult. And when we've been talking about using our trauma-informed practices, we know that kids are dealing with abandonment issues. We know that it's hard for them to trust people, and then we got this. You know, people in other lives, and I just think it doesn't, you know, like, we could do better. And I'm asking us to just think about that, maybe hire them by site, change that up. Bargain, you know, bargaining's open next year. Just because it's in the, I do a lot of things outside the contract. I stay late all the time. Just because my job ends at 3:30 doesn't mean I'm gone at 3:30. Just because it's not written into our contract doesn't mean that you can't, you know, allow principals to hire and let them be part of a team and let them be site-based instead of district-based. That is all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Melissa Holmes-Villavong.
Hi. Much taller. It's Melissa Holmes-Villavong.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. That's all right. I have messy handwriting. Good evening, members of the board. I teach special education at Turner Elementary for the past eight years, and I'm honored to be supported by my Turner team today. We have a wonderful school. But I wanted to share something that has been having a huge and negative impact on us and our students. I believe, Mr. President, you might have received a class letters of my disgruntled students from the lack of our copiers and printers that we're having on campus. So I just kind of wanted to share something that I wrote down. As teacher, as a teacher, people think it's the big things that make our day and break us down. They think it's the education system or feeling unappreciated that makes us want to leave the careers that we've chosen and went into debt for. People think the reason that we retire early or endlessly scroll on Indeed, looking for new jobs, is because of the big things wrong in education. But it's the little things that stack up on each other that weigh the heaviest on our pros and cons columns. For me, it's the little things that make my day like a child that with a, holds up a piece of paper with backward S's because he's beaming with pride because he finally wrote a complete sentence. It's the little things that make my day like a child I don't know coming to me with a flower at recess after I just cried at my desk when the kids went to PE. And it's the little things that make me break down, like the district taking away the copiers that our school purchased just two years ago. It's the things, little things that make me want to quit, like standing in line for one out of two copiers for a staff of 68 people for printing papers, and now being told that we're gonna be put on a budget as if I don't already budget my own personal money to make sure that my classroom is fully stocked each month. And so little things that you guys can do as board members that would really change your perspective on this district. Like, take a tour with a teacher instead of admin to really understand how the school is functioning and what we need. It's the little things like including teachers in tough financial decisions like budget cuts and perhaps get a better perspective on things we don't need rather than cutting the essentials. And it's these little things that impact teacher retention and student learning. It's the little things that make us all feel seen and heard and valued when the nation's education crisis falls on the shoulders of teachers. And it's the little things that help take that burden and distribute that weight that let us know that you understand the impossible job that we're trusted to do in encouraging tiny humans into young adults to become the next generation of critical thinkers, curious citizens, and functional members of society. It's the little things that changes everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Freitas.
Good evening. Amanda Freitas, kindergarten teacher at Fremont Elementary. And I just wanted to speak on technology tonight as well. My first thing is, again, we used site funds. We requested at the very beginning of the year in August for two new smart boards at our school that still haven't been delivered. And I, I guess I don't understand why it's taken a whole school year, right? We have 12 school days left, maybe 11 school days. I don't remember now. And they're still not delivered to our school. Color printing. I don't understand why we're now restricted on color printing. I shouldn't have to rely on a secretary in the office to print something for me, whether it be for open house or centers for my kids, whatever it may be. I'm at school for a very long time. I get there at 7:00 in the morning. There's nobody there to print for me at 7:00. They leave at 4:00. I'm there past 4:00. I shouldn't have to work within their working hours to get my job done. And they have a job to do, too. They don't have time to sit and scroll through my 200-page document to print the 10 pages that I need. And honestly, I can't send a 200-page document. And we don't have access to Acrobat Reader anymore, so I can't just take the 10 pages that I need and put them in a file to send because that's something that we don't have access to anymore on our district's computers. New printers in the classroom. Again, we spent precious site funds to get printers so that we could print things like lesson plans for subs when the big printer wasn't working. We've had them for maybe, some of them only a year, some of them two, maybe going into three years. Just put new printing ink cartridges in them, and then a couple of weeks ago, they came in, took them, delivered new printers, which didn't work right away. We went from some classrooms having working printers to waiting a couple of weeks for somebody to come out and make sure that they were set up. Restrictions on printing. I understand that we have money-saving measures, which is why we're probably doing the color printing. But I see waste everywhere in this district. Very first PD this year, we got a brand-new book from our presenters. At the second PD I went to, they printed an entire chapter from that book they had already given us instead of just asking us to bring it to the PD. And to make it even worse, we never even touched the chapter. So a stack of papers printed by the district went untouched for a PD. But you're telling me I can't print things for my students in the classroom to help them learn the standards that they need to learn? Grass. We're wasting a lot of money there. I don't know what's going on with the sprinkler system at Fremont, but since I've been there 13 years, I'm pretty sure it's been broken. I watched the lawn get watered for over two hours last week. I know I only water for 10 minutes in the morning and 10 minutes in the afternoon at my house, and I know how big my water bill is. So I can't imagine what the water bill is for the district with the waste that we have going on there. So I think that we need to look at where we can cut money in other places instead of things that teachers need for in-classroom learning with our students.
Thank you. Next, we have Ken Kent.
Hello. Good to see you, President Hernandez, trustees, Dr. Wayne. I'm not here to talk about the political climate. I'm not here to talk about the federal government being weaponized against us. I'm not here to talk about the vulnerable communities that we have. I'm here to say that I know this board supports all of our communities. We want to see our most marginalized minority and immigrant populations given the support and the caring they need. And resolutions are a way to go about that. Having, sorry, I'm getting a little stuffed here. Having resources available on our websites is a way to go about that. Both of these things are very quiet. They're not visual. They're not out in the community. Worked with the union recently to have our elementary schools and, and high schools have Know Your Rights for Immigration cards, and they're in offices, but they're not visible. I'm encouraging the board to ask our district, ask every site, to make the support of our communities visible, big, in front, every day. And these are not just random hypothetical situations. At my own school site, families had immigration hearings scheduled for them in Texas. And through fear, they decided to take their whole family with them, and they have not come back. You might say, oh, well, in California, our children generals are saying we're gonna take a stand against ICE in our communities. Doesn't mean it doesn't impact our families. If these families had known that they could get more services, they could get more advice, maybe they wouldn't have gone to Texas. Maybe they would have had an attorney who could file on their behalf. And they could keep their court systems local in California and have a better chance to stay in this community. But because they're trying to follow the rules, they're gone. And so please, as a board, make it loud, make it visible, right? Diversity is our strength. Inclusion is caring. And equity is a step towards justice. But it can't be done in the dark, and it can't be done with a timid voice. We are at the point in history where it is up to all of us to be the final check and balance to our current government because all of our other branches are failing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Boett. Oh, oh, no. Oh, I see. This one got mismarked. Yeah, there you go. Great. So that is all the comments we have under 7A and 7B. Next, what I'd like to do, our next item on here is Earth Team presentation. But I know that I did receive a request to move up item 12C. So I'd love, so I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and move item 12C to after the Earth Team presentation. Is there anyone that supports that motion? Second. So I formally make that motion. So I just need a second.
I'll second.
Great. Any discussion? Great. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. So we'll go ahead now and invite our Earth Team to come present, and then afterwards, we'll do item 12C.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. Welcome to our Climate Literacy Framework presentation. This Sustainable Youth Internship focuses on teaching undeserved communities about local environmental issues and advocating for environmental justice. Our framework objectives are climate literacy into the AUSD school curriculum to educate and inspire students to either pursue or understand these topics. We also advocate for reducing food waste, mitigating health risks, promoting climate change awareness, and organizing community action, which falls under our framework objectives as well.
Hello, everyone. Some climate impacts we face as residents are high rates of exposure to major air pollutants, respiratory diseases like asthma affect 15-point percent of children in Contra Costa County. The burning of fossil fuels increase the concentration of greenhouse gas emissions in the atmosphere, which traps heat and leads to global warming. Ways we can reduce fossil fuel burning is transition to renewable energy and improve energy efficiency. Global warming is a huge impactful factor in our earth. Antioch is highly impacted due to various heat waves by global warming, droughts, and wildfires. If no significant impact is made, Antioch is expected to seek 28 days over 99.4 degrees by 2050, a four times increase in days this year.
So Johnny just finished explaining pollution impacts in the world and in Antioch. Now, we have a few bullet points here. The local issues we wish to highlight tonight are environmental racism and lack of environmental literacy/exposure. So why are these issues important in Antioch? So we wish to showcase examples between the disparities of northern and southern Antioch through a pollution tracking tool called Kalen Bureau Screen, which is currently being shown in the screen. And this tool is accessible to anyone. It can be found online, and it measures a variety of different polluting.
Using EnviroScreen, we can see northern Antioch, specifically Antioch High School, is heavily polluted due to its location being near factories and landfills versus, on the next slide, we see southern Antioch, more specifically Deer Valley High School, is way less polluted, most likely to, or most likely because it being near more recreational areas such as Target, Walmart, all those places. In order to address the differences between these two schools within the AUSD district, there needs to be a comparison between school budgets, student behaviors, academic scores, and more. If we address the large disparities between the two high schools due to location, house pricing, and more, the public would most likely be more willing to help change occur and in turn target and change Antioch High School for the better.
So as we just saw two slides ago, Antioch High School is in the orange zone for air pollution, and we are being surrounded by the red zone, and that is obviously not a very good thing. So now, more than ever, is the time for us students and us as people to be educated and receive more exposure on these environmental topics. So we are seeking for AUSD to implement environmental science classes on the elementary to middle school level. And then as these kids transition into high school, they can go into electives or pathways that specialize in what they've already been learning. And then they would be able to go on field trips where they can learn from industry leaders and feel even more motivated to pursue a career in the environmental science field. We also want to be implemented reusable cutlery and trays in our cafeterias to cut down the waste accumulated by our schools.
Knowledge is power right now. The district wants the youth, and especially high schools, to be educated and engaged. We want AUSD to incorporate trash sorting programs in elementary school that eventually leads to middle and high school. It'll be similar to Mission Elementary's Peace Patrol, but instead maybe Trash Patrol, where students at an academic track are able to learn how to sort trash properly. They'll be able to go through recess or after-school programs to learn about the difference between recycle, waste, hazardous waste, and compost. If children understand and instill the knowledge of these different types of waste, it'll be carried through high school, adulthood, and communities around them. Students can feel a sense of leadership, impact, and be inspired to pursue careers in the environmental sphere, oh, career. We also want to collaborate with after-school program because more children stay at school, and they'll be able to have a safe environment to learn extra lessons or even just have a safe space at school.
The community groups that could assist us in achieving this goal are us, Earth Team, Antioch Resource Recovery Ambassadors, and of course, Republic Services.
Along with this, I believe that figuring out ways on how we can implement the environmental curriculums throughout various educational facilities will necessitate a plethora amount of aid and funding from various supporting partners, including Bike, East Bay, Antioch Council of Teens, et cetera. Surrounding elementary school literacy, I recommend implementing an Earth Week or an Earth Month type of system in which teachers will spend the majority of their teaching periods educating their students through a variety of interactive learning activities, specifically tactile ones, since students their age like to work with their hands.
So as demonstrated on the previous slide titled "Action Steps," we would like to have a continuation of the reusable food trays and utensils to reduce waste emissions during lunch, and to also continue the outdoors class and the Trash Patrol, which was started in elementary schools. We would like to expand their knowledge as teens on climate literacy by implementing educational videos, projects each scholastic year, and also interactive learning such as guest speakers and booklets. And to high school strategy is to make it a graduation requirement of service hours of cleanup events for a more interactive way of learning, and to have provided funds to advance our existing climate change class called the Edge Academy for the students who choose to continue learning about it, making it a class that can do outreach projects to ultimately educate our community and have more volunteers participate.
The initial use of our budget would, or the initial use of our theoretical budget would contribute towards pushing out our click framework by purchasing supplies such as trays, reusable cutlery, industry dishwashers, and pushing for the environmental science and outdoor classes and trash control program. Those would have long-term benefits in the form of production on constant spending on plastic and cardboard. Further on, the use of our budget would be adjusted quarterly based on what needs more focus. To measure our waste reduction that spawned from our efforts and budget use, we'd compare our waste emission via weighing the previous year's total landfill, which is a landfill, which is a combination of compost, landfill, and recycles to the coming year's weight of landfill, which would be properly separated post-click implementation. We can view our Trash Patrol's progress and the effectiveness of our environmental classes by looking at the school's environmental cleanliness via comparison of photos, recordings, and logs of the campuses state in previous years to what it is or will be after a year's progress. All feedback and suggestions would be sent to the teachers and coordinators of the Trash Patrol and environmental classes, and cleanest information about the classes and program would be made during the weekly speaker announcements so that students and teachers are aware of how they can participate to better the environment or where to go to make suggestions to do so, or potentially concerns that may arise.
President Hernandez?
Yeah.
No, I want to appreciate the Earth Team. These are student interns who work with the Earth Team as an organization that promotes youth activism and leadership in the area of environmental stewardship. And so I want you to know, Mina from the Earth Team is here, and so she's led the work with the interns. She's also met with Christina Barra from Educational Services and Kendra Ebinger, our college and career coordinator. So we know some of the actions are, you know, more implementation steps that would be administratively led, but you see there's possibly policy implications as well as partnerships with community organizations. So they know they are working to have a presentation with the city. We have our City Schools Committee. So just for questions or comments that you have, know that there are some areas where we work on, but also any guidance you provide. If we want to look at policies such as graduation requirements or, you know, around nutrition services, those are things we can take into consideration as well. But we will be following up on. We really appreciate your thoughtfulness, your, what you, you know, the analysis you've done, and you have some really good ideas that we think can help our whole community. So thank you for sharing it with us.
Yeah.
Any comments from my colleagues?
I did have a question. So under local relevance, it says, what are the issues? So can you give me an example of environment, environmental racism in regards to your presentation?
I'd say an example of environmental racism, when compared, we gave the comparison of Deer Valley, and I'd say compared to Deer Valley, Antioch does have a lot of, a lot more people of color. And it is also known that our academic scores are a lot lower than Deer Valley. Unfortunately, an example, unfortunately, I can't think of an example right now, but I will get back to you. If you could please tell Mina your email, I will give you an adequate response, but right now, I unfortunately can't think of much.
Well, maybe if I can maybe jump in and add some additional support, because I think the analysis you did here actually is what really points to that and is like really sophisticated and great analysis. When you're pulling up like these charts, looking at northern versus southern Antioch, you see like that clear border along like Highway 4, which has been something that I think historically has separated different parts of town. And when you look at the demographics of that northern area versus that southern area, you see clear differences in what, you know, is there more people of color in certain area? And then there's also like the intersection with income and the economics, which is, you know, unfortunately, hard to disentangle from race. So I think you all did a really great job.
Right, because it's known that Lone Tree, the Lone Tree Way, Deer Valley, right in front of the community center, that area is a lot more, how can I say, nicer compared to where Antioch High School is, where we constantly see policemen around our area because we are near Sycamore, where there is a lot of gang-related activity. You don't see that near Deer Valley as often, nor do you hear about situations occurring as much in Deer Valley. It is mostly just negativity and bad reputation given to Antioch High School. So...
So you have, you have answered all along.
Right, you did. And the purpose of my question is to know how to support you guys, so that way this cannot be an issue. So that's the purpose of my question, and thank you for answering the question.
And then we'll go to Vice President Rochelle.
I have a question for you. Have you checked to see what the asthma amount is on most schools, the difference?
Do you mean specifically in Antioch?
People that have more problems with, with their bronchial tubes, et cetera, because of the environment.
Sorry, can you please repeat your question? Do you mean asthma rates in the United?
I'm just asking to see if you have done some comparison, because you see that red mark around Antioch High, and you're saying environmental has a lot to do with it. Well, environmental also brings in the air quality, and do you see a higher percentage of students with asthma in that area versus the one that's in Deer Valley?
Yes. Thank you for your question. Right now, we haven't done any active research on that. All the information that we've currently pulled has been from the Contra Costa website, and that isn't really updated very often with asthma rates. We only have a general overview of Contra Costa itself and not necessarily city by city within Contra Costa.
It's a thought. I just thought you might want to take a look at that because that definitely ties in with the environment.
Thank you so much.
More idea? Hi, Mia. It's so nice to see you here tonight.
Yes.
I just wanted to say thank you to the team for the information that you provided, and especially because I had no idea that Antioch High was close to, was close to factories or industrial areas. You know, these things escape you. They're right in front of you. When we're talking about environmental racism, we know that low-income and people of color are typically been zoned to be in more industrial environments, whereas other communities tend to get more green space. So thank you so much for pointing these factors out for us.
And I wanted to thank you all because it just, it reminds me of, you know, coming out of the mouth of babes, like we literally need to, like the work that you all are doing is, we need to be there. We need to catch up. The adults need to catch up to you all in our, in our school system with the sorting. And you're right, when we start in elementary school, children oftentimes teach their parents what to do, right? I live in Area 2, and I was watching, it was an employee, I'd imagine, from Republic Services, our garbage company, were going around and looking at each of our bins and tagging them. And I was so happy mine didn't get tagged. I felt like a good student. But, but it's important when you think about the landfills and the environment and just composting is so amazing and how we can grow gardens. I mean, this can come, grow into something so amazing, and I'm so proud that students are the ones, wants to lead it. And I want to thank you, what's your name again? Mina, because she reached out, and she's like, can we, can we do a presentation? So thank you for your leadership with the team, and I look forward to this team growing and being at other schools as well. So thank you so much for your leadership.
Yeah, I just want to, again, uplift particularly like just the level of sophistication and like this analysis, and particularly in, I think, something that you've exemplified that I'd love our district to continue to work on and grow on is, how do we take information that we have and translate it to the experiences that people are having? And not just like, what are the numbers here, and why are the numbers different, and how do we get those numbers to be more of the same, right? You're translating this to what's the experience that people in like northern and western Antioch are having compared to people in like southern Antioch? And you guys are having and bringing up the more complicated, challenging issues that people often don't like to talk about that are exactly at the root of these like climate change conversations that I think, just I think, I think, and I also want to speak to the framing of this that I think brings into light for people that have challenges understanding why climate change is so important and connecting that to the other things that people more easily connect to, things like, yeah, like, like health, things like what the experiences our students are having, things like, you know, are we having to think about closing down schools because it's so hot? How is that affecting like our attendance and whether people go to school? So you guys bring this into a context that I think is really building a much stronger coalition and bringing more people together to understand the impact of climate. Because I think something that I see so often, and honestly, like I'll say, I'll struggle with it myself, is I know that climate change is important, but I think the youth and younger people see more clearly how greatly important it is. And I think the more you can continue to push that message, the more it brings people along who know that it's important to do but kind of put it on the back burner. So I definitely want to encourage you all to continue to have this conversation with us. I think that Superintendent Wayne's point, let's like keep talking about like, what are the things that maybe you all need to work on with like principals at school sites and communities there, parents, and what are the things that we can do policy-wise to support that? What are the things that we can do when it comes to where we allocate our resources and things like that? So just know that, that we have like different roles depending on like where people are in the school system, but I think you hear loud and clear that we're all really supportive and very, you know, and I think oftentimes you can feel like, adults in the room always say that we're like very impressed with things all the time when it comes to students, but I truly want to emphasize that this is a really awesome and exciting work that you all are doing.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move on to 12C as we voted on. Item 12C is Antioch Education Association's initial proposal to Antioch Unified School District for the 2025-2026 school year. And we do have a public comment on that one that I will call up first for Kendra Borja.
Good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to present our sunshine for next year. We're trying to start early because we are hoping to finish quickly. It is a full contract reopen, so we have a lot going on, but a lot of them won't be that intense, I don't think. We're hoping to open Article 11, Hours of Employment, 12, Salary Schedule and Payment for Extra Duties, 13, Health and Welfare Benefits, 15, Class Size, 16, Safety Conditions of Employment, 17, Assignment/Reassignment and Transfer, 18, Leaves, and 36, Technology. So it sounds overwhelming, but hopefully it will be done very quickly and successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. So unless there's any discussion or additional context from staff, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to accept the initial proposal from Antioch Education Association for the 2025-2026 school year.
I move approval.
Great. It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no, and the motion passes.
Great. So just for some, just to note, no, appreciate AEA wanting to get the ball rolling. Just we're in the process. The district also will sunshine its proposals. And then there's a public hearing for the public to comment, even though they can come to board meetings by statute, there needs to be a public hearing commenting on the sunshines, and then negotiate, the negotiation process can begin. So we're working... So we're working on our sunshine and we'll go through that process accordingly.
Great, thank you. So then now we'll be back on the regular order of our agenda, starting at nine. A, District Reports, Bond Projects Update.
Yes, so very excited to present this update. You know, the community passed, passes a bond and, and knows there's a need and wants to see work happen, you know, yesterday, because that's when the work really needed to happen. But takes a while to get the projects lined up, get the staff in place, the oversight in place. And so we're excited to provide this first update on the Measure B projects that are happening. And to do so, want to introduce our new Director of Facilities, Miguel Cruz, who's joined by our Coordinator of Facilities, Erin Heck.
So, good evening, members of the board. So first and foremost, I wanted to introduce myself, Miguel Cruz. I'm very excited and honored to be, have the ability and the opportunity to serve as Director of Facilities here at Antioch. You know, although I, this is my first board meeting and I'm new, with the relationships that I've built so far, I've definitely identified that we have a team here that's very committed to not only delivering facilities that are safe, inclusive, and innovative, but we're deeply committed to that. And I could tell that right off the bat. So this evening, we have an update, a general update on the projects within our Bond Measure B. Erin Heck, who will be doing the heavy lifting for us this evening, has been very busy bringing me up to speed with all of the projects, the program, et cetera. But she's been deeply involved with the projects from design through execution. So I definitely want to recognize her for that, for all of her hard work, and appreciate her being very supportive to my onboarding. And then lastly, I'm very excited to be here, and I look forward to supporting our facilities for, you know, the priorities and the values that this district has. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Erin to provide us specific updates on the bond.
Thank you, Miguel. Very happy, by the way, that he's joined us. Much needed, so thank you for that. Good evening, board and greater Antioch community. Thank you so much for having us tonight and allowing us to bring some of the, what we've been working on to everyone. So tonight, this is an active list of several of the projects that we have going on from one point or another. Excuse me. And so it's varied throughout the district. This is only the first part of what we've started since our initial release of funds. I won't read through everything, but it gives you at least a general idea of where we're working on right now. For this first project that we're going to highlight is very exciting for us. We are redoing the turf at Antioch High School. And what I think is really exciting about this is we have added the flag football, which is very popular right now in the district. And it's got the most current regulations, which I think from the vendor we were told is, we're kind of the first ones now that have that. So we're very excited. That's in line for the summer. At John Muir, this gives you a rendering with just an idea of some of the fun things we're looking at for the TK classrooms. This is two buildings with six TK kindergarten classrooms. It's kind of colorful, and you'll see in the front there, we don't have it overly developed for this rendering, but we will be looking at a new playground area that will be dedicated for that TKK age group. This gives you just a general idea of one of the classroom buildings. There are, it's more collaborative, so it has doors and stuff where teachers can collaborate across classrooms. There's shared teacher workrooms, lots of cubbies and training walls, and then, of course, age-appropriate restrooms in each of the classrooms. And, right? And this gives you, this rendering gives a general idea of just some of the colors and the tackable wall space for all of the wonderful artwork that the kids showcase. There's lots of light with the clear story, as you can see. And so I think it'll end up being a very fun space. And this has, by the way, we did go through the process of having the community meeting and the teacher meetings and got a lot of really good input. And in fact, what that brought to us, there was a general consensus between the two groups of the pressures of the traffic that was already existing there. And then the concern was by adding the TK buildings where those portables you see are on the right, the concern then was that we would be basically exacerbating the problem that already existed with traffic. So we took a step back and thought about how we could maybe redo that. We had conversations with the city and with Department of State Architecture to find out what we could do differently. And so we're designing now extending that drop-off area and widening it so that we can do parking as well as a much better system for the drop-off. Okay, Fremont. So Fremont now has been very exciting. We had moved up a design phase for Fremont. There was a lot of extensive work that was planned for this campus. And so though it was originally scheduled for Phase Two, we did push some of the coordinating efforts and design up to the front. And also trying to understand traffic, which I know I've sat out there myself and watched to kind of see what was happening. There's very narrow streets there as well. And so we figured, trying to get out in front of it, traffic was also going to be something we were going to need to address. And so in this rendering, what we've talked about is actually moving the whole face of the campus where it now exists on F Street over to D Street. So we're actually separating and creating two separate drop-off areas where you have TK on the bottom left there you see, and its own drop-off area. And then the traffic on D Street has its own very nice, big drop-off area. And then we would collaborate with Antioch Middle on maybe staggering start and stop times so that we are able to distribute traffic a little bit better. But in this, we're showing you the new NPR, and that's kind of in the pink there, and the admin building in the yellow. And then a new playfield, they have quite a bit of asphalt there, and we thought maybe we would bring some, a field, whether it's soccer or whatever. We have actually just gotten in where we're going to meet with the staff at their final staff meeting. So we're very excited to get their input on modernization and other things that we're looking at for this project. And this gives you kind of a rendering of some things that we have looked at for redefining the entry at Fremont that right now is just kind of a, a straight fenced-in area with no real definitive sort of entry area. And I think this brings a lot to what that entry could look like. Orchard Park, we have the gym and cafe buildings. Here in the pink, it was just kind of, it doesn't translate as well, I think, in this slide, but we have the cafe and kitchen area down there, more toward the bottom where the existing campus is. For those of you maybe who aren't familiar with that, the existing campus is down below where you see the hash lines. And then there's a lobby on top of that, sort of joining where the new gym and the fitness area would be, locker rooms. And then again, also with traffic, just extending that drop-off area with more parking, that also would be a community use facility for the gym. And so we're trying to accommodate that as well. I would mention before I click again, the hashtag building is where the current sort of kitchen NPR area is. And so, oh, I didn't, anyway. This is the frontage that we had been looking at for the option for having that cafeteria and gym space, and a covered eating area as well, which is really nice. Shade, I mean, shade seems to be the overwhelming sort of thing that we need to be paying a lot of attention to. And here is the slide. For that existing NPR building, we would convert that into two classrooms and a science classroom and a science prep. So that, that's really be helpful for them. And then playgrounds, we've been really going at the playgrounds and planning, and we identified several Priority One sites. And that was to make sure that we were meeting the TK needs coming up for this fall, as well as shade and all abilities play was a very important theme. This one that you see here was actually for Kimball. And so there's a lot of panels that are for, you know, inclusive play. They happen to have a pour-and-place foundation that is nice and level, so it's, it's good, has really good access to it for these kinds of panels. Several of the panels have sensory play as well, which is nice. And then they can also use the structure underneath for shade. We've tried to incorporate as much of that as possible. This is one we were looking at for Orchard, for their Kinder TK. And so the, again, shade structures and a lot more like panel use, which this one, I guess, doesn't show too much. You can kind of see from this rendering, there's musical components and things which I think are kind of fun, and panels under the structures. And then this is an upper play yard, actually, that we're looking at for Jack London. And also, again, utilizing the underneath portion for panels, and there's actually little seating areas under there. And that's.
Thank you, Erin. Do just want to appreciate Erin and Miguel's work, but, and Ms. Liz Robbins isn't here tonight, but just do want to note, they also, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee had its first official meeting. You approved the committee in April, and we have one of the committee members here, Christina Pedrosa. And that's really where we get into the details of the budget, and they provide oversight to make sure that we're spending the funds in accordance with the law. But tonight was really about providing an update. There's work happening with the bond, and we wanted to make sure you and the community got to see that. And it's exciting that we're moving forward with these projects.
Okay, and then maybe before we jump into comments, comments from the board, we do have three public comments that I'd like to make sure that we hear. So first, we have a public comment from Amber Digan.
So I wanted to talk about the needs of Fremont because our school's very old and needs a lot of love. And I would love for Fremont to get the love that it really needs and deserves. Our school has had a lot of issues over the years, so I wanted to speak to a couple of things. This school year, we had to displace a large number of students because frankly, we just lacked classroom space for it. Don't quote me on this, but I want to say about 17 first graders got moved to other schools out of Fremont. Some of those families had one child at Fremont and one child somewhere else. And you can imagine, especially if you're a family that doesn't have reliable transportation, how difficult that is. So I would hope that, I mean, I don't know how many classrooms that we're going to have eventually at Fremont, but I hope it's enough to accommodate the fact that we actually have lots of people in our community that would love to go to Fremont and are not able to because we lack space. We have so many teachers having to share classrooms. We have difficulties finding places. I mean, we're going to get a new SDC class, and the only way to make that happen is to basically kick out the wellness room. And where the wellness room is going to go? No idea. But the SDC room has, best SDC has to take that room. And anywhere's guess where that one, where that's going to go? So we need more room, we need more space. So I hope that that, the project is going to address that because we are bursting at the seams. Another thing that I wanted to talk about was the play structures, particularly for upper grades. That play structure is very old, and the fourth and, the third, fourth, and fifth graders that play on it are extremely bored with it. I don't know if that's going to be upgraded, but I hope it is. I'm all kind of shooting blind here because I don't know the specifics of what's happening at Fremont, unfortunately. So I'm just kind of saying, I hope these things happen because I don't honestly know what is going to happen. So those were the things that I were, was most particularly concerned with. I know that earlier, we were supposed to get extra classrooms, and then I've heard that that's no longer happening. So I'm not sure exactly what the count is as far as that goes, but I hope that we're going to have more classrooms because we have lots of kids that need to stay at Fremont there, in our community, you know? I mean, think about it as a parent, if you had your, if you were living across the street from the school and you were told, no, you can't go to that school, you have to go to this one, all the way across the town. And, you know, maybe one of your kids gets to go to this school, and then the other one has to go to Kimball, or it has to go to Orchard Park, or it has to go somewhere else. That would be a little annoying, I would imagine. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Freitas.
I just wanted to come and share my disappointment with how I've seen the project at Fremont evolve. I just want to remind you, this is the rendering that you showed to the public in order to get them to vote for the Bond Measure. I realize it's just a rendering, but even earlier in this school year, we were told 13 classrooms. When I saw this on the agenda item and I saw, it just said TK classrooms, I was very alarmed. So I went and I spoke with my principal, who shared the diagram that we all saw today. And so instead of 13 classrooms, I'm hearing it's only four classrooms. And with getting those four classrooms, we're also getting rid of four portables. So we're not actually gaining any extra room. We don't have enough room for all of our professionals on our campus, right? We don't have room for our psychologists and our OTs and our mental health professionals that come on campus. Our Wellness Together guy goes into the closet that was for the PE. Could you imagine getting mental health services in a closet? My son gets his mental health services in basically a closet on the stage because we have no room. And I just, I'm just really disappointed in how this has evolved because we told the community we were going to get one thing, and we're changing it to something completely different. And then we wonder why the community doesn't trust us, right? I fought for this bond because I really, I knew that Fremont needed this project. I knew that the district, you know, across the district needed work done. And I think sometimes we're negating the fact that we're infested with termites at our school. During the play, we had to shut down two of our bathrooms because the termites were emerging once again. And I don't know if you guys have had to work in an environment where the termites are crawling out of the walls and dripping from the ceilings, but I have multiple times. And it's disturbing to the students. It's disturbing to me, who has to go in and clean it up afterwards. And it seems like we're not doing anything to address that. It looks like maybe it might get addressed through the bond. I didn't, I didn't hear anything about it tonight, but the kindergarten playground. Because we were told back in October that our turf was going to get redone because there's multiple holes, the kids are tripping in it. It never got replaced. We were told, October break, we will replace the turf for you. And here we are, the end of the school year, and that's still not done. And I haven't heard, you know, that as part of the bond project either, so that's a little concerning. I just think that our students deserve better, our community deserves better, and we shouldn't put forth one thing and then change it to another. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Boett.
Hello, I'm Laura Boett, and I'm a TK teacher over at Fremont. And I also want to address the same concerns. I'm also a community member, so I voted for this bond. And I was under the impression from the rendering that Mrs. Freitas just showed that we were going to have 13 new classrooms. So it's alarming to me that we're going from 13 classrooms to four classrooms. We are taking portables away. We're not actually adding any, the only value I see we're adding is aesthetics of a new office building and a new cafeteria. The cafeteria is going to be so far away from the TK area and the kindergarten area. Right now, I walk halfway across the campus to take my students to the cafeteria. Also, I had to have my school admin assistant put in a work order because I started having termites come out into my classroom and burrow. What they do is they make little tunnels to come out from the ground. And they started to do that on my back patio, which I am trying to improve so it's a nice place for my TK students to play. I guess I'm just very disappointed that things are just not going the way that I, I was led to believe when I voted for this bond. I really feel that the students there, because it's such an old school, that they deserve something better than what we have right now. And also, too, the concrete in our, just in our courtyard. And also too, the concrete in our, just in our courtyard is so badly uneven that we've had several adults get hurt. We have rock that should really be cemented over. The kids play, that's in the front of the school. My TK students play with it every morning. I have to try to stop them from playing in it and rocks, who doesn't want to play in And also too, with our technology, I mean, I have three outlets in my room. So in order for me to accommodate my students with all the different things that I would like to do for them, I can't because I have no place to plug in like my light table or I don't even have a place to charge my iPads. I have to go find another spot for them because the outlets are just not even conducive to where my students need to do their, their play and all their other activities without tripping over electrical cords. Really that's, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And now do any of my colleagues have questions or follow ups?
I do. I do have a call. Isn't, I guess it's a question, but more of a concern. You mentioned, where did she go? No, Laura, you mentioned, sorry. You guys mentioned when you guys came up ladies, that this was something that you guys did, it was voted on in the fall, meaning fall of 2024. I did not take the seat until December of 2024, so I wasn't a part of the, the voting process. So my concern, it does have me now concerned, hearing this, I don't know how we can go about this for me. I would like to know why the changes were made. Cause I'm pretty sure we know that we have to vote on it. And before I vote on something, I need to make sure that I'm clear on what I'm voting on. And so, and I think it's in all fairness, right? And so I don't know if we can pencil this for another time because I do would like to see what, what made the change. If they voted on one particular thing and that's not being implemented.
Yeah, I guess so. So two points on that. One, we can ask the staff right now to give some feedback on that. And then two, this is just information. So we're not voting on anything in particular with this. This is just an update on how the bond's been going so far.
Yes, I'd like to bring back up Erin and Miguel. And I think if you can speak to both what is happening there as well as the process we're going through. So for example, we will be meeting with Fairmont, Fremont, sorry, to share more about where we are in the stage in, in the process and what that means. And I think be able to clarify some of the work that's happening because there will be, there's a distinction between, and Erin will then speak to this more coherently, but like, you know, between new buildings coming in, but also modernizing existing classrooms, which will be happening at the schools. And so, you know, so we'll, we'll need to make sure that we're communicating that clearly and it's understood that all the work that's happening. But you can share a little bit more context about that.
Sure. So what was shared tonight was just some of the features as to where we're at now. Part of the what is so important for us to meet with the staff next week, is to find out and get this sort of input from them on what's most important. There's, we're kind of battling two things. Because of the political climate and tariffs and things that are happening, we are finding lead times for materials and our dollars are for the bond aren't going quite as far as we had hoped. However, at Fremont is one of the biggest projects that we have. And I didn't highlight everything here because I don't know yet everything. We need to really meet with the staff and find out what the priorities are for the chunk of money that's reserved for modernization, which is for classrooms. I'm not aware that we're losing any portables, that I don't recall seeing that we were losing portables. I know we were moving a couple of portables. And so I think really it's just because I wasn't able to share that because I don't have that yet. I, I need the input, much like we found out with John Muir. We need to have their important input in order to develop that the way that I think they're hoping for.
And then Erin, can I, can I, and just add, if you can, there's also just to know there's, there in the, having gone through bond programs, it's helpful to know this, that in the process, there's three stages and Erin or Miguel could say the right terms. Can you say the three stages before anything actually comes to the board? Cause we do then go out to bid for the project. We have a better sense of the cost and then that's what comes to you to, to get voted on. So can you name the three, it's like design development, those three stages and where we are in, in that stage for Fremont as well as for Muir? Cause I think they're in the same, same place.
Sure thing. Yeah. So right now currently and what we're sharing is very preliminary. You know, they're just renderings. There is an overall budget that has been allocated to Fremont, but we are still working through the details of that budget to determine what's going to be allocated to admin, NPR. There's an option about covered walkways. Is there money left over to do modernization? What are we hearing from the site in terms of their priorities to ensure that we're being inclusive to the feedback that we're getting and then we're making appropriate decisions from there. So we definitely recognize the timing of this presentation versus presenting it for the site staff probably was not ideal. But we do have a scheduled meeting with the staff next Tuesday, followed by apparent community meeting scheduled the following week as well. So we're hopeful to gather the bulk of the feedback there and then incorporate that as part of the schedule. But right now currently Fremont is on schematic design, which is the initial phase of design. That's followed by design development, which gets a lot more into the weeds on, you know, the type of units, the square footage of classroom and different spaces. And then it's followed by construction documents, bidding, and then construction and closeout after that. So we're very in the early stages for now.
Trustee Lathan.
Thank you for sharing. I would love to get the calendar of meetings to attend some of the meetings with the staff and the community to understand what people are asking for and, and also what the needs are, right? Of the school site. So if you can share that with, you know, the superintendent, that would be great. So that's one. And then two, as the projects move on, who typically is responsible or who is the person who will update the sites on the, the projects and the district?
Yeah. So that'd be collectively as a team. So right now we're with all of the projects that we have under the bond program, we're taking a divide and conquer approach. I've taken lead on the larger projects, which are John Muir, Fremont, Orchard Park. So I'll be working closely with the principal, the site staff, providing newsletters, keeping them updated on where things are at and how things are progressing.
And then getting their, their input, that's important, what they need.
And just, yeah, so it is the facilities department that leads that, that effort.
Are there questions, comments? Yeah, trustee Kobo Smith.
I just want to add that I too would like to get those dates. I'm sure that Dr. Wayne was already planning on giving them to the whole board, but I just want to say it out loud because, and I do, I do believe that we can all come to an agreement that is satisfactory for everybody, just like you did at John Muir. I'm looking forward actually to hearing what people have to say.
Yeah, good. Very good.
Lastly.
Let's go vice president, and then we'll go to trustee.
No, I was just going to say, we have known for years that that school has problems with the bugs or that you want to call them. And in this transformation of change, is some of that going to be eliminated or are you going to sit it right back in the same spot where they're going to come back up?
That definitely has been discussed. I don't have a solid answer yet on how to address that. We have to bring in actually, I think, some consultants on what's been happening and how we can control that. But one other thing is to make sure that any new building materials that are being used for the new buildings will do a better job at containing that. So yeah.
Thank you. And lastly, this may come up with the staff meetings and also community meetings is just thinking about our, the students who just did the climate literacy framework. And so thinking about ways in which to utilize what we know best as far as we can, right? About climate change and what that looks like. Of course, the little things like water stations, I've noticed a lot of our kids have water bottles, but then any other green spaces or something where we can create and capture water and things like that. So I'm just hoping that those will be a part of it. And I know we're limited in funds in terms of how much money we have. And I understand that if we have to, you know, go out for another bond or parcel tax or something, we'll, we'll have to figure that out later. But that is something that I'm thinking about because we want our facilities to outlast us and not to kind of, so to make sure that we're thinking about the future as well.
Definitely. One of the things that I thought was so fun is that in construction and coming from that world, there is a huge push for recycled materials, for how we handle our construction demo materials and where does that filter through? And so you can get reports. It would be kind of fun actually to work with the earth team on what we're doing at the bond program and how we're being responsible with that, with construction and demolition. Yeah, thank you.
Great. Yeah. And I just, yeah, I think want to uplift that. I think there's a really great opportunity here to be a little bit more climate conscious. And I think the earth team very much demonstrated some of that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for presenting on this and all the work that's been done on this so far. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Next we will move on to 11 consent items. We do have two public comments on item 1100. And the first public comment is from Laura Boett.
I just wanted to comment on the mindful life project. I believe that I've been involved with the prod, or had had the project come to my classrooms for probably, let me think, probably right after the pandemic, so about four years, five Like I said, I'm in TK. The coach is supposed to come in for 20, 25 minutes. I'm lucky if the coach comes in for five to 10 minutes. The coaches a lot of times don't even teach to the grade level that they've come in to teach or to coach. I don't believe that one time a week is beneficial to the children because they see this person for five, 10 minutes and then whatever they've taught has not stuck. Especially with TK with the younger kids, four to five year olds, you have to tell them like 20 times before it sticks. So they're coming in once a week and it takes 20 weeks and they're coming, and they're coming in with a different lesson, lesson every week, they're not getting much out of that program. And a lot of times I've talked with my colleagues at my school and they kind of raise the same thing and they're in different grade levels. So I'm just not sure if this is a good use of our money, especially since we're talking about, you know, printer limitations on printing and other things. So I would like you to reconsider the contract. Thank you.
And then the next comment on the same item is Amanda Freitas.
I've been involved with the mindful life project since it was brought to Antioch Unified School District. We were one of the first two schools, Fremont Elementary, to have that. I wish that the district would ask the staff for our feedback on how we feel the program is going. Cause it has, in theory, the mindful life project is a really great idea. And I think if implemented correctly, it could have a huge impact with our students. And it sounds like at some other sites it might be being done successfully, but at Fremont, it's never been done successfully. We've had a lot of turnover of coaches. I think this is the first year where we've had the same coach return for a second year. But she's not really teaching anything. She kind of just comes in, does a mindful sit that's not really a long, you know, a long enough mindful sit, kind of touches on something. And because I've been around so many coaches, like I, I've seen some lessons like done very well. I, we had one coach, he was with us during the pandemic and I believe he's higher up in the company now, who did a really good job. I think that was the one successful coach that we've had. But a lot of teachers on our site just feel like it's a waste of 25 minutes that we could be teaching something else in our classroom. And like Laura said, when the current coach we have right now, he's filling in for somebody on maternity leave, maybe 10 minutes he's in my classroom and then he's like, oh, I think my time is up. And we haven't really touched on any of the different strategies, you know, the breathing, the anchor spots, the amygdala. I mean, these are things that my kids haven't heard about in the last two years. And so I just, I really wish that we would get some input to see if the program's being successful before we continue having our kids in it. Cause then at the end of the day, they lose out on 20, 25 minutes in the classroom for them to come in for the instruction. But in the upper grades, they're also doing rise up groups. And so then that's another 30 minutes twice weekly that they're missing a class. And if they're not getting anything from it, that's important classroom instruction that we're missing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm wondering, Dr. Wayne or Ms. Ibarra, if we have any additional context on, I guess, like process for like feedback or like this program?
Yes, I, I have a report from a survey that was given to students and to staff, but it looks, it appears as though it's from the 23, 24 school year. Looking at third through sixth graders, there was almost 1,400 students that took the survey. 91% felt that mindfulness is important to them. 90% of the students feel they are better able to pay attention in class. 83% of the students shared they are better able to calm themselves down when strong emotions arise. And 91% of them wanted it to return to their school.
What grade level?
That was, I'm going to, I have the rest of the data.
Kids can't read the questions. I was just clicking it out first. Sorry.
For grades first through second, about 1,043 students were surveyed. 94% of the students understood the importance of self-compassion. 93% of the students understood, understood that mindful breathing is useful when strong emotions arise. 92% of the students understood concepts of mindfulness. And then from the teacher, let me see, there was another student assessment survey responses from upper grade. 87% of the students reported they would want mindful life back at their school the following year. 84% of students understood that mindfulness is paying attention to the present moment without judgment. Highlights from our mid-year teacher and staff survey, 70 staff and teachers, 96% of Antioch teachers said mindful life programming is supporting greater, or creating a healthier school culture and climate. 95% of Antioch teachers said mindfulness is being used often by students and everyday experiences throughout the week. That's just what I have in the report that they provided, that I can share.
Yeah. I guess I am wondering if this is, and I guess as I'm looking at the contract, just doesn't look like something that we need to approve at this meeting. Could this be something that we postpone to the next meeting to make sure that we get kind of any questions that trustees have remaining on this to get like addressed?
I do. You know, I hear the two teachers' concerns. I, I wonder if moving forward, when we approve, actually I strongly suggest as we move forward for the next school year, that before we have any recurring contracts that we approve, that we always get data around how that program has improved. What I would feel not good about pulling this one is the principal put it on here for a reason. So maybe some other teachers and staff are having a better experience and so I would not want to dishonor them in that way. But I do think to their point, like we need data. If we're going to keep approving companies that come back, even our after school programming, we're, we're paying like nine, 10 million. Like we need to know like what is the impact to our staff, to our students and how are they actually progressing and doing with the services that we're paying for. So I don't think this is a one thing. I think it's a broader systems issue that we need to pay attention to. And that's not to discount what they're saying, but you know, like it's on here for a reason.
Just wanted to point out that the, what I was just reading from is actually in the attachment, once you get past the contract.
And so I, I'll just add that when we get these reports, because I agree with Dr. Jag about the, the process to, of review for contracts that we'll be renewing. of review for contracts that we'll be renewing. I would also like to know the tools that they're using, the feedback loop that they're using. Because my first thought was exactly what was expressed by the teachers was how are you giving these children this survey?
And if you'd mentioned that this, the survey was done in 2022, 23? Is there any way possible we can get an updated survey? Cause I'm like with trustee Smith, how did first graders understand these questions? I mean, maybe their parents was filling it out for them. I mean, I'm just kind of curious.
I can, I can get more information and see if anything can be done in his last few days of school. That'll be the challenge, but.
Okay. I mean, I don't, well, I just wish there was something more updated, right?
Yes, I understand.
Those, those feelings have changed since.
True.
You know, time has passed. So maybe the percentages and the rates are going to be a little bit different.
The survey was from the 23, 24 school year. So it was just last school year. So they're going to do another survey at the end of this school year.
I got that, but I just don't like, Dr. Jag said, I just don't want to like spend funds on something that's not working. I mean, you know, if that makes sense.
I think for me, I find us at attention right now, right? Because like there are schools, like, like Dr. Jag also said, is there are schools that want the program? Otherwise it wouldn't be on the list. But there's obviously a site that feels very strongly that has not been beneficial for their students. And so in that case, and not to just go off on a tangent, because like I'm very in tune to some of these concerns, because they've also come up in the special ed ad hoc meeting. And so I think I'll just be quiet for now, cause I have a lot of thoughts running through my head. But yes, I definitely would like a better process on how to review things. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I'm, I'm unclear what the direction of the board is on this. I think acknowledge, yeah, that I think processes can and should be improved. I think similarly, these things, yeah, come to us from like not just one school, but like several schools. So I feel comfortable moving forward with this here. But I also see that this could be an opportunity for what kinds of questions would we want or need in the future for things related to this? And this can be used, I think, similar to some of the ways that we've like, you know, tried new ideas with the way that presentations have gone. This may be a way of like, well, what kinds of questions would you need answered to feel comfortable with things like this?
I'll say, I mean, you know, I think it's, it is very helpful that the data is attached. And you're, you are absolutely correct that you should be reviewing program efficacy when considering, you know, to continue with this. I think that, you know, there's, there's also the distinction between the overall program and then specific site implementations. So what you can be assured of is that there'll be follow up on the Fremont implementation of this program. Because if what's described is how it's happening, yeah, I, I actually have been at the schools and seen mindful life myself. And no, they're, they're meant to be a meaning, I was in a classroom where there's, you know, it's not five minutes. It's a meaningful engagement with the students where there's a relationship built. And so we will follow up on any site specific implementation concerns. But overall, you know, the, the data and the feedback from sites has been that this is a program worth, worth continuing.
Then, then I think, I'm comfortable, I think, with moving forward with this with the, you know, I think we've expressed strongly that we want to make sure that implementation is consistent across school sites.
Yes.
I'd like to see the review. And I'm okay with passing it at this time. But I'd like to have it come back.
I have, I have a question though. So if we pass it and all these schools move forward with it, there's, there's like a cost that we're paying, right? $292,000. So, so let's say one particular site decides not to move forward. So then will they get replaced? Will they get, will they get a different service? Would they have the option to do a different service or a different program? Like what, what happens to that site?
I'm, I'm not actually sure. I was just looking in the language within the agreement, wondering if, if schools, certain schools, if they didn't find it effective. Cause what we typically, what I've experienced before is if they're not happy with the coach, that we work with the organization to either provide better training for the coach or replacing, or you know, kind of getting a different coach that is more effective. We've tried that. My assumption is by it coming, cause I did speak with the director over elementary in making sure that the sites were using it and that there were, you know, that there was a desire to move forward. Cause we are looking at budget, you know, saving funds where we can. So not necessarily because it is funded centrally, it's not like they're going to get something else instead of. It would, it would be looking at, you know, as much as we can, we provide equity. Not all the elementary schools are on here to begin with. So maybe it would go to a different elementary, if, if we're going to go with the contract with them. And then they have a lot of other social, emotional and mental health supports as well. And so we're trying to look at balance so that schools all have something if they, even if they don't have the same thing. If that makes sense.
With that, I, I'm not sure that, I, I think I might want to hold it because.
Well, I think what, what's not, what I'm not hearing is a need, like we, like there hasn't, I'm not hearing that there has been like a needs assessment recently for whether or not we want to continue with this and if the schools are actually benefiting. So I'm okay either way, to be honest, because we don't have enough data to, you know, and I feel like if, if the staff is saying that it's needed in some places, then fine. But I just feel like we need a better system and process. But, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, cause I would rather, if, if we could still approve it before the 25, 26 school year, then why not hold it and get the data that we need to make a better informed decision now? Like it doesn't hurt anything and then.
Whatever the will of the board.
I guess the question I have is like, are these partner sites self-selected? Or are they something that was coordinated from like the district end of like, hey, these are sites that we think should have this program? Or were principals like, hey, we want this, or like a combination?
It was a combination. So it was presented to them years ago. And so the sites that demonstrated interest in it are the ones that participated.
Yeah, then I think to, yeah, like some of the points that were raised here, then I think these sites have already like self identified that this is something that they want. I think there's some clear information that's being given to us about like challenges in, in consistent implementation that can be. I think that, that we're going to address and want to see addressed. And then, yeah, I think then to me, I think that, that these programs were brought to us. So I think that means that there is buy-in and not something that we're implementing onto the schools.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are these going back to the same schools they've had before? So what I'm getting at, is there any new ones in, well, I don't know if you would know if there'd be any new ones.
I don't believe there is.
So this continued pattern?
Yes, that's what I believe.
So if the continued pattern, they keep asking for it, there must be some groups that enjoy it or they, it's okay. And maybe what we're having is an issue with some of the presentations. And that needs to be something that we need to.
We'll address that, yeah.
Do it in the contract. The contract's already written that you can go in and suggest?
There are, we could always bring back an amended contract that either changes sites or perhaps eliminate, eliminate sites. That's something that we have, those language in there where we can, we can even cancel the agreement, you know, but with, with notice.
Well, I'm in, I guess at this point I'm in favor since the majority of those schools have said they wanted the program and they've done it before. I think what we're hearing is that it might not be equal in all the schools. And if we have control of that and somehow in the contract, then I think that's what, so who oversees it? Is it that you oversee the programs to make sure that they're handled the right way?
So, yeah. No, I think two, two things. One is, one is, or three things. One is, you know, if you postpone, I, I mean, I'll defer to Ms. Ibarra. We are in the planning stages for next year. So, you know, it, it could pretend, if you, if we bring it back on June 11th, there may not be any issue. We haven't talked with the vendor, you know, they may have concerns. Secondly, the contract does allow changes and also always allows us 30 days to, those are standard contract terms to pull back. So if a school doesn't want to do it, there's room for us to negotiate that. And then thirdly, I think when I say we're going to follow up, we're going to follow up on the concerns. We're also going to follow up on the communications. I mean, the questions I have, and I will want to make sure right now as the leader of the district and to hold people accountable is, have these concerns been shared with the principal? If so, what was the response? If the principal can address them, were they shared with the school supervisor? Are the program, are the department leader who runs this program? And then if they were, were they then addressed? And if not, was that escalated to Ms. Ibarra and to cabinet to address? And then what if, what communication has happened back to the site to demonstrate that they have been, been addressed? Because that's, I think, information you would want to know and we'd want to know. Because if all of those, if all those steps were taken and we're still here at a board meeting where teachers feel like they need to share that there's concerns with the program and a coach isn't showing up, something's breaking down along the way that we need to, we need to figure out. If that, all that communication hasn't happened, then we need to make sure that we're working with our teachers and our schools to understand, look, when there's an issue, we don't want to wait till the contract's coming forward to find out that a coach isn't serving a classroom in the appropriate way. We want to address that much sooner. This is not the forum to, to address that. So either way, we'll get the, the answers to those questions, cause I think it's really important to find that out and address it. And so, yeah, the risk if you, if you delay it is just what, you know, where, how the vendor responds and if it puts in jeopardy any other, you know, the programs at any other, any other schools. The risk if you move it forward is, you know, there are, you know, again, we have 30 days to address things. Like there are, you know, hurdles we need to go to, go through if we want to address these problems. But we, it sounds like we have worked with this, with this, you know, vendor before and we'd be able to work through them. So those are the considerations. But whatever you do, know that those questions, we'll get answered to those questions to follow up with you so we know.
Yeah, and then also in the future, data, not just the survey, but suspension data, referral data. Like if, if we're talking about mindfulness, like how is it impacting students overall? In addition to that, I know we have Second Step. I know we have restorative practices. Like we have all these things, right? And that's a lot of money that we're putting towards these different programs. And how are they either all working together simultaneously, like, you know, to, to work towards the good of our students? Or are we just throwing spaghetti at the wall and we really need to focus on other things? Second Step is a great program. Like how are we implementing that, right? Do we really need this program? Cause Second Step, you can get some of that as well, right? And restorative, restorative practices too. So I'm just, it feels like a lot of stuff. And I'm like, how is it actually making change for our students?
Trustee, call us, then.
I, I feel comfortable moving forward, but, and I enjoy the conversations that we're having about how we're going to be more thoughtful about approving and reviewing contracts.
Any other consent items that we need to address or there's questions on?
I have a couple. One, 11H through in nutrition services. I just want to give them kudos because every year, this is like the third time they've come to us. It feels like they're expanding our services outside of our district during the summertime to provide nutrition for summer programs. And so I just want to say kudos to them because they are always rocking. And that not only is it income for us, but it's feeding children during the summer. So that really is a great thing. 11V, Liz is not here, but it's approved agreement with Facilitron Incorporated to provide electronic systems. Just if you guys can, if the staff can take a look at Exhibit A later, because the contract says $10,000, but then there's a part on Exhibit A that says $100,000. And so I'm not sure, maybe if, I wasn't sure how to interpret that. So it might supposed to be there, but I was like, that's a different number than 10,000.
What letter is this?
11V.
V, okay. Let me just look, cause I'm familiar with Facilitron from other districts. This actually generates revenue with setting up the use of facility.
Could be about that. I didn't understand it. So 11A, I mean, 11V in, in Exhibit A. I have a feeling I did not understand it, the language. And then 11Y is approved certificated human resources, 24, 25. And I am, it, it took me a while to get to this point to be able to make this comment cause I have been a former principal. And I'm not here to hurt anyone or to say anything negative. But I looked at the list of principals who are being moved around or hired. And I was really disappointed in the selection for Deer Valley. And again, this is really hard for me to say as a former principal. But when I look at the growth, when I look at the needs, Deer Valley has had several principals over the last few years. I mean, like what, four or five principals? Yes, four principals in three years. And there hasn't been much growth academically there. Suspension rates, like, like all that is really needing to come under wraps. And we're moving a principal from a school that did not have good results academically or suspension wise. English learner development has decreased. And I'm not sure why we're making that decision versus figuring out how we're going to hire someone who's, who's turned a school around and we've seen them turn a school around. And so again, I typically don't do this publicly, cause I've been in this situation. But when I look at the decisions we're making and the needs we have for our schools, we need someone who is like able to get in there and turn that school around. And of course build relationships with our staff. So if we vote, we are going to vote on this, I will vote no on 11Y.
So two things. One, for that one, appreciate the feedback. We did share with you, you know, we've talked in our governance, governance workshops about, you know, roles and responsibilities. And I think we, we shared with you the process we go through and the district goes, goes through to recruit and hire principals. And I think you're giving helpful feedback. I hear your concern about the specific situation, but you're giving helpful feedback in that process, for that process about what needs to be considered when going through that process to make recommendations and make selections for hiring. So we'll, we'll definitely incorporate that feedback as we move forward. And did highlight in, in that communication, we know with the turnover at Deer Valley, no matter, you know, who, who's coming in there, there needs to be a support plan that is specific to the school and targeted to address some of the issues that you, you highlighted have happened there. Secondly, going back to the Facilitron, yeah, what they're saying is, is the way it works is they get 10% of the fees and from our rentals. So they, it's a program that sets up the rentals for our, of our space. And by, they, they generate, they get their revenue by taking 10% of the revenue we generate from the fees. And it's saying, if we generate less than $100,000 worth of fees, they, you know, they get still a minimum amount to pay for their services, right? So it's making sure they get up to, I think it's the 10%. So that's where it's the, the 10,000 number is more, is accurate of what we will end up paying them for using Facilitron. Either through, we get the, through the fees or because we didn't reach that level of fees, we're guaranteeing that difference.
Thank you. And so I don't know if you guys had a comment about 11Y? Nope. Okay. And the teacher came up here earlier and he talked about NCUS audit and actually wanting to do something with that information at Deer Valley. So I hope that we are, we really, Deer Valley needs a turnaround. And we need a leader who can do that. Last one is 11UU. This is the approved, to approve the Contra Costa County School District's inter-district attendance. And I think the change is, it's a longer period of time. So when students want to leave our district and we approve it, I believe it's saying that they can stay in that, the district that receives them for five years. So it's just an extension. And that's fine. I think almost every district in our county has signed that MOU. That I would encourage us to think about in the future. Because Antioch actually has a lot to lose. I don't know about other districts and how many students request to leave their district. But we have a lot who do. I was walking around my neighborhood, I'm in District Two or Area Two. And most of the signs that say graduation, you know how they have the cute little signs now? None of them had Antioch Unified. It was all cornerstone heritage, like other schools. And I'm going, no, you know, so while some students are getting inter-district transfers, we are one of the fastest growing districts because we have housing that are, that's consistently being developed. And we need to think about that in terms of making sure our, our school district is rock solid and provides everything students need so that parents don't feel like they need to go to another district. So that's just something I was thinking about. That's it for me.
Antonio, I know, the way we're sitting is kind of hard to see. But I did have a comment on 11Y as well. Being, living in Area Three, which is the Deer Valley area. And it is disheartening to know that the number of principals that they've had in so many years. And I know that children need consistency, right? And so clearly there is no consistency there. But not only do they need consistency. But not only do they need consistency, they need to make sure that there's someone there that is going to get them to the next level and to get them to where they want to go, right? And so I will, I mean, I know that we're voting on some of the things, but I, I would not be in agreement with the, the selection for the new Deer Valley principal as well. And it's just a lot, being able to, to live in an area where you just see a lot of different changes. And because I do have a dog in the fight, which is my, my daughter. So she's going to be growing up in the Antioch School District area. So I have to think ahead. And so that's the comment that I wanted to make.
Any other comment? Trustee Coblesmith?
Yeah. So for me, it's not future. For me, that, this is now, right? My granddaughter attends Deer Valley. And with that, I just want to thank Dr. Jag for her reflections. I respect her opinion greatly. She is an educator. She has been an administrator. And with that being said, obviously I'm going to be closely intertwined in what's happening at Deer Valley, not from a board, a board member perspective, but also, but from a family member's perspective. I will be highly attentive to what is going on there. And with that being said, I do feel comfortable moving, like I, I know that there was a firm stance of no. I will be voting yes.
And then I think I'll go ahead and jump in then of comment here. And again, acknowledging that I understand the, the concerns that were being raised there. But I think if we, but I think, you know, I've heard what the process is. I've heard how this election happened. And that's what I believe our role is as a board, is to monitor those processes, not individualized decisions. I know that there's probably disagreement on that idea. But I think from a governance perspective, we have to trust in our staff. We have to trust in the people that we have in the school district. It's, it's, I think, a very different thing to say, hey, we trust these things and then question the decisions that are being made. And so I think that, you know, I think we're running into dangerous territory when we're starting to like pick at individual decisions and not question parts in the process more so. And so, yeah, so I think, you know, from a good governance perspective, I think this is exactly what we're here to do is I think bring up questions, but ultimately it's about processes and not about like individuals. And I think we've highlighted what are the potential issues or challenges that we're hearing. And then now our role is to ensure that those things are being addressed, that there's adequate follow-up and accountability when those things are kind of brought forward. So yeah, I'm definitely comfortable moving this forward.
I would like to add just one thing, sorry. Thank you for that. That was, that was actually really clarifying and I appreciated it. Were students part of the equation of this?
Or parents?
We invited.
How were parents selected? Because I know that my daughter was not approached.
So we had the secondary director reach out to three different parents who all served on different committees. When we do a panel, we're a little bit limited in the number of people we can have on a panel. And I'm sure, as you all know, in, in looking at the superintendent process, panels can get very big very quickly. And, and while we want to honor the process, we also need to be mindful of the process. So Dr. Lindsay Wisely helped me reach out to various parents who represented different groups. And we offered interviews to three parents as part of that panel. And one was able to accept. And so that parent, if I remember correctly, was pretty highly involved in their parent organization. And I apologize that I don't know all the specifics with the parent. In terms of students, I, I actually asked if we could have students on the panel. And I couldn't get very good answers about liability in the district in terms of allowing a student to come and participate during the school day and transporting the student and things like that. And in the future, it is something that I would like to look more closely into. And I, I tried to get that information and I, I really wasn't able to get it in a timely fashion to feel okay with the decision to take a student out for the school day to participate in a panel. In my prior district, we, we did. And so for that reason, it is something that I'd like to explore for human resources going forward with our principal panels. But I, I wasn't able to get adequate information from other people that I outreach to in the district to make me feel comfortable with that process in terms of it had never been a practice here in Antioch Unified. And I was trying to get that information like in a one week time period. But my understanding is that from what I could gather, students hadn't participated on principal panel interviews for the secondary level in the past. I would like for that to happen. I have that on the long to-do list for the next principal opening we have.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan, and then, and then we'll go Vice President Rocha.
So thank you for talking about the process. One of our roles as a governing body is also to monitor outcomes. So in the, and the outcomes give us an indication of the process, right? And so since the outcomes have not been well in some of the other schools and we're bouncing principals around, what are we doing? That is a part of our job. We, we approve this because we approve hiring. So we might not be in the process, but we can look to see what the outcomes are. And so that's all I'm saying. If we want excellence in our district, then we need to make sure that when we're moving principals around, they have a track record of excellence where they were. So that's all I'm saying. It's not even about an individual person necessarily. But what we want for our students now is trustee Coblesmith says. And then also as trustee Brown said, also in the future. And, and we, we just can't keep doing this, moving folks around and we're just not getting anywhere. So, and I looked at data. So I'm not coming up here like just saying, oh, this is not about liking a person, disliking a person. Literally, I looked at data and I'm going, so we know Deer Valley needs to get stronger in every way. And there's no history of being able to move, move schools. But we need someone who can move a school. We need someone who, like EL, English Language Learner Development decreased there. So, so the, but that's the strong need at Deer Valley. So yes, I understand. I trust the staff. I've been in a lot of their shoes and we make the decision. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just stating it because I'm ready for excellence in our district.
Next President Rocha.
I guess I have to give a little bit of the history here. It's where it comes out. That school was planned in a way different way than it's being currently run. And that's because of money. People that, that had this great idea had campuses or I say units. And one was for freshmen, one was for 10th grade, 11th grade and 12th grade. But when it was built, they forgot to include the school education and the money. So you could put a principal in each one or even a VP in each one and then have one central principal. So my thinking right now is that we've had a lot of concern about Deer Valley and the succession of principals. We've even had a double principal there together. And we couldn't do it then. So I would say to the district to take a look at it. What can be done? Maybe reconfigure it and take a look at how is the best way to work with Deer Valley so they don't continue to have this turnover and turnover because it is affecting a lot of students. But it's not anyone's fault. It's the fact of how it was planned and put together so many years back.
And, and sorry, if I can just add, and I know we did the report. But the, the principal that was selected unanimously by the panel was selected. They applied. We're not moving them. We, I know, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Jag. I definitely do. I have some ideas around our principals and, and potential recruitment and outreach to try and get a broader pool in the future because I think that's what we're lacking. High school comprehensive principal job is a very difficult job. I did it for eight years under very different circumstances than what Deer Valley is facing right now. And so I have some ideas around that type of recruitment, hopefully for, as we go into next year. But do know that the panel was very excited to bring that person forward. And I know we're not talking people, we're talking big picture. But I think the focus for human resources needs to be, how can we draw a bigger pool for our comprehensive high school principalships? Because that, for me, in terms of process, is the big concern right now from a human resources standpoint, is we're just not getting the draw. And so I want to go back to the drawing board and try and advertise ourselves for the amazing district we are and the people that work with us for, on behalf of our students. So I, I do agree, yeah.
Thank you, Carrie. And I, I hope as well that you would look to have more equity on the interview panels because it sounded to me like that interview panel was handpicked. And with, when we're serving as many students as we are, I think we should be a little bit more conscientious about making sure that, that there is, there's just more equity in, in terms of who can be on these panels. Because I know that for our interview panel, for the superintendent, a lot of people wanted to be on there. And that was one of the reasons why we went to the pulling of the names from the hat.
And, and that's something that I, I can definitely work with our labor representatives on because they typically have input on certificated and classified employees who sit on those panels.
I was, I was more thinking like the families, parents, families.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So as long as it's okay with everyone, we do have a public comment on 11Y from Lindsay Wisely.
Hello, Board. I just want to share some data that you may not be privy to right now because it's preliminary CASP data. But we're seeing a raise in English test scores at Park. We're hoping to hold. We have accumulated over 95% of this population. So we're really proud of Park Middle School for doing that. I also want to share with you that Park has been at the forefront of all the schools in the district, all 25 of our schools, doing alternative to suspension. They're now showing that the students who participate in that are having a 93% success rate. Their suspensions overall are down. You're going to see improvement on the dashboard. So I wanted to give you that information because it takes, you know, a principal several years to invoke change, the, the really, you know, profound change that Mr. Bowers is doing. So I wanted to certainly share that with you because it's not reflected in the current dashboard data. And I do see that there's other areas of improvement. We are committed to supporting Deer Valley High School. I am an alumni of Deer Valley High School. So I want you to know that we are definitely going to be watching closely and ensuring that Principal Bowers has support. Thank you.
Does that comment or?
No, I just want to pull it for, for a roll call vote.
Any other comments on this or other consent items before we jump into voting on this? Great, then let's go ahead and pull item Y. And I will go ahead and move to approve certificated human resources report 2024, 2025, 12. Is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded. Let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Coblesmith?
I'm sorry, forgive me. We are only voting on Y right now.
Yeah, the motion is, yeah, to approve item 11Y, approve certificated human resources report 2024, 2025, 12.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
No.
Vice President Rocha?
Yes.
President Hernandez?
Yes. So the motion passes, 3-2. Now for the rest of the consent items, I'll also entertain a motion to approve the remaining consent items, A through WW.
I move approval.
I second.
A through WW.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve all consent items, A through WW, except for Y, which was voted separately. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes.
Correct.
Moving on to 12A, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. So I'll turn over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, so this declaration comes to you once a year and it's in accordance with California Ed Code. The board approved Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. This is a necessary step in order for the district to be able to apply for emergency permits or limited assignment credentials. And those are ones that you see every board meeting with individuals' names on them. So alongside the declaration tonight, you will see resolutions that provide formal approval for specific types of actions such as emergency CLADS, things like that. And this helps us remain in compliance with state regulations. The resolutions provide transparency, they ensure accountability related to staffing. And the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Teachers and the corresponding resolutions that you'll be taking action on tonight are required to be sent to the County Office of Education and the California Commission on Teaching Credentialing upon approval. So this is a yearly process where we basically estimate and overestimate the number of these types of permits that we might need to hire teachers who don't have preliminary or clear credentials.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators.
Move approval.
Great, it's properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor to approve Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to B, Adoption of Instructional Materials. Bedford, Freeman and Worth Psychology CP, college prep grades 10 through 12 at Antioch High School and Deer Valley High School.
So for this one, we gave the context in the board summary that this is, in the end, the, based on the staff, teachers' recommendation, that it's just up, getting the updated edition and to get it, to get materials for, to get access to the online materials. However, at our governance workshops, we talked about having a little meta-conversation about this. And so if Christine Ibarra, if you could share the process we go through for materials? And then you, this is, I think, a good example when we talk through like what level, you know, which type of materials we need to be familiar with and when do we just, you know, maybe just follow the teacher's recommendation? So if you want to share a bit about the process and then, no, this one's pretty, again, more straightforward example, but it's still good to, to see how these things.
Especially because we have a math adoption coming in the next year or so.
Yeah, and that will be a big one.
That'll be a big one. So vendors and publishers are invited to create a presentation and demonstration of their materials. And this is, event is open to all staff for initial preview. And then the staff will be surveyed to ask to identify top three to four publishers for consideration based on the feedback from those surveys. The district will typically create a pilot experience for teachers and identify staff. And then that would allow them to, you know, work it in the classroom and get a sense of, you know, how the students are responding and so forth. And then once that process is complete, teachers make a final decision. And the district will host a 30-day preview of the recommended materials. This allows for the community parents, everyone to come in and take a look. And then at the conclusion of that 30-day review process for all stakeholders and educational partnerships, the Ed Services Department will present the materials to the board for adoption and consideration.
So in this case, this, again, the staff recommended just doing, going with the updated edition. But the process that Christine described was, you know, when we do a full adoption for math, when there's those presentations, you would ask, well, when would we get to? Either you had asked or maybe Ms., and maybe Deborah Keyes Wright had said like that, you know, for those, it might be helpful to be familiar with the materials. Those presentations, we can invite you to, so you will also have an opportunity to see what those are as well.
And I just wanted to point out the tools that they utilize through this process are the ones provided by CD, by the California Department of Education.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the instructional materials.
I make a motion to approve the adoption.
I make a motion to approve the adoption of instructional materials.
I second.
Great, so the motion on the floor is to adopt instructional materials, psychology, college prep for grades 10, 11, 12, as described. Such adoption is to include approval of ancillary materials such as workbooks, resource binders, tests, and other print and digital components from this provider as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to our next section with items is 15, Resolutions for Immediate Action. So we have item A, Resolution 2024-2557, authorizing provisional internship permit. So I'll turn over to Ms. Wells.
Yes, so this is the sort of perfunctory approval that you do almost every meeting to approve the selected individuals for a provisional internship permit through the California Commission on Teaching Credentialing while they're in the process of qualifying for an internship permit for their teaching credential.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2024-2557, authorizing provisional internship permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 16, Resolutions for Second Reading and Action, we have item A, Resolution Number 2024-2553, Declaration of Need to Request Emergency Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development Authorizations through the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing for teachers teaching students who are English language learners for the 2025-2026 school year.
Yes, this is one of the resolutions that partners with the Declaration of Need that you voted on earlier. Sometimes when we hire teachers from out of state, they don't necessarily have a CLAD yet, and so they have to do coursework. And so this type of request allows them to be in the classroom and be in compliance while they complete that coursework.
I move approval.
Great, so it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
I second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2553. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to 16B, Resolution Number 2024-2554, Declaration of Need to Request Emergency Short-Term Staff Permits through the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing for the 2025-2026 school year.
Yes, and similar to the last action, this allows teachers to be placed on those short-term staff permits when they are working towards the final stages of earning the teaching credential and the preliminary credential.
Good.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan, was that a question? Oh, I saw your hand up, sorry.
I move approval.
Yes, great. So it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 2024-2554. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item 20, Future Agenda Items from Board Members. Maybe we'll start on my left this time. Trustee Lathan, any future agenda items?
None.
Vice President Rocha?
None.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
None.
And Trustee Brown?
None.
Great. And then maybe we'll move back from the other direction for, we don't have any additional comments that exceeded the first three minutes. And then so maybe for now on 22, Reports, Comments from Board Members. Item A, Reports, Comments Relative to Memberships or Other Organizations. Maybe we'll start with Trustee Brown.
Another successful meeting. And it's before 10 o'clock. But I, I'm really just looking forward to this exciting time of the year. Last, was it last night? Monday, we had a chance to go to Deer Valley High and see all the beautiful scholarships. And it was really nice to see them being awarded for something great. I'm super proud of the Special Ad Hoc Committee and what that's going on and how we're setting things up for our, our students. And when those meetings are over, laying that foundation, for that foundation to be laid and for, and to go further. It's, the graduations is just really a good time of the year. And I'll be going to my first chaperone with my daughter on her field trip. Thank you for the district for providing a TK celebration for all the TKers in Antioch District. We're looking forward to having fun and just being a part of that special need classes. So. And there were sites that I went to go visit since our last meeting. And it was just a good thing to go and, and just experience the laughter. I don't know, it's for me, I just love kids when they laugh. It just does something. So hearing kids laugh and play and smile, it makes me believe that they're happy, right? And that they're feeling good at that moment. And I just tip my hat off to teachers and educators because those smiles that you guys give may be the only smile they'll see because we never know what kids are going through behind closed doors. And so just being able to experience that was really good and I really enjoy it.
So this is a very exciting time of year. I've been invited to a lot of things and I've tried to attend everything. I'm not going to name anything because I just didn't make a list and I'm afraid I'm going to leave something out. But if you've invited me to your campus and I was able to, just know that it was a lovely time for me. And to those that I couldn't attend, it's always with my deepest apologies and it's most likely because I have to work. It's probably nothing else. And with that, I'll also add that in the middle of all this, I'm doing, you know, we started the Special Ed Committee with a focus group and so I'm doing the thematic analysis. And everybody just gave such rich information. I'm really excited for our next meeting, which will be on the 28th, where I'll report some of that out. And, and we'll start some visioning, just really, really trying to reimagine special ed for our students and for our district and what we can accomplish. So I really, I believe we're going to do good things.
Thanks, President Rocha.
Okay, what I really wanted to do to make sure this got on the books and it's going to the City and School Committee, referring it to them. I understand and I said it to a couple of our members or administrators, that the school, the city has the PG&E building. And they might be interested in having some kind of connection between the school district and the city. And that would help us with the expansion of, or give some space to adult education. And because they're right next door to each other. I don't know all the particulars. That's why I'm asking you both to maybe consider looking into it, about the size, what could be done, what are we talking about, what is the money issue? And maybe we can have a joint effort. That's number one. I owe you all a delegate assembly report. I did it this last weekend, but I was so tired, I didn't get down to writing it down. The second thing is that I went to the ELAC meeting for Fremont, I'm not Fremont, I'm speaking for Marsh. And I just tell you that if you can go attend to one of those next year, it's interesting. In Marsh in particular, there's always about 30 parents. And they were so excited because they have a possibility of 17 reclassifications. That's unheard of.
That's awesome.
And they need to be honored because they're working hard in order to get that done. I'm sorry I haven't made some of the other ELAC meetings. I'm sure they have good reports, but that is our outreach and that's what we need to do is connect because that's our parents that don't always come to see us and the parents that are united in that particular school. I went to the retirement dinner. I did have a chance to give out the scholarship to my son Louis Rocha. And that was fun because the amount of students that received scholarships, they received more money this year than they did last year. It's amazing. Let's see, and then the open house is coming up, 29th Middle School and the CBI. I hope we all can attend the CBI graduation on the 29th.
Trustee Lathan.
Yes, just, I'm going to go as quickly as I can. The Second Annual STEM Event was amazing. We had over 500 kids, teens, and families attend. It was at Williamson Ranch Park on May 3rd. And over 30 companies that hosted engaging hands-on booths, so that was super fun. And I just wanted to give a shout out to the teachers and students who came. So the teachers who hosted booths were Felicia Lang from Jack London, Salacia McKenzie, I'm not sure which school, Darren Newt's from Bidwell, Elizabeth Gullian from Bidwell, and Shazia Burke from Dallas Ranch. They'd have some really cool booths that the children and families were able to come and enjoy. And also, Trustee Kobo Smith had a booth there as well.
A cool booth.
A cool booth. And then student volunteers. Most of our student volunteers were from Antioch, but we had some from Pittsburgh High too, so Maddox. So these are all the, the Antioch kids, Maddox, Michaela Thomas, Michaela Feliciano, Samantha Yonatan, were all from Antioch. And then from Pittsburgh, we had Jeremiah and Timothy. I don't want to give their whole name necessarily, but I'm so appreciative. It was just fun and we had great entertainment and all of that. So hopefully you all can come out next year if you weren't able to come out this year. I wrote down your comment about PG&E, so I will look into that. City School Standing Committee, we had a meeting earlier this week. And we're still working together as a city and a district to, to kind of dig into what whole child, whole community means for us. So we just, it's a reflection activity we've been doing around visioning. And our next meeting is June 2nd. And the goal is to get to a place where we have a conversation about how we're going to engage the community. So we kind of did a flipped of what the Special Ed Committee did. We started with the city and the district. And part of that was for us to heal together as a city and a district so that we can figure out like how are we going to, what is our vision on the, on the governance side? But also we understand and really want to make sure we get the voices of staff, students, and the community at large. And so we will be talking about that in terms of what does whole child, whole community look like for everyone as we move forward with the, with this partnership. So that's it. June 2nd here, 1:30 PM in, in the boardroom.
So I'll just highlight maybe a few things I went to. I think the one of the ones that sticks out most in my mind is I was on a panel at the California Youth Forum on mental health. And I was there with a therapist who also was on that panel. And we had these students that had such great questions. And then we had them have the ability to submit anonymous questions. And we got like this, like really big stack. It was like maybe a room of like 50 students. And we didn't have a chance to address all the questions, but I think what stood out to me is just how heavy those questions were and just continually realizing just how much our students are carrying. There was questions like, what do I do if I don't feel anyone at home cares about me? What do I do if I feel like I'm not good enough? What do I do, you know, what do you do when you feel sad and don't know how to fix it? Like just these things that like were such heavy questions that students were dealing with and how much they like carry. And so it really just stuck out to me of like, that we had this moment where we had these like great discussions. People were like laughing and we were sharing about like, you know, like these like real mental health challenges they were having. But then when it came to these anonymous questions, there's just these like very deeply challenging things. So I think we often see the joy in our students so often and don't always fully recognize that like, even when you see a lot of joy, they may be carrying just so much beneath there. And what can we do to kind of like address that? And how do we make this a thing that they feel comfortable and able to address sooner? So that was just like one reflection that I think I had from that event that, and then I think it showed that youth want to address this. And so how can we find ways to like empower them, to take the lead, to bring this out in the open and have it be something that they can feel, that they can talk about? The other event I went to is, I went to C3 Day at Dozer Libby Medical High School and got to speak to some classes there. They were, I think I particularly got a lot of questions about like, what amount of debt does going to medical school take on? What amount of debt does going to like college and things like that take, take on? As well as like my journey throughout like some of these things. And so I think I'll just say one thing in case anyone is listening or hasn't ever heard this before, that I think always surprises people, is like just apply to colleges first and then see if you get in. And then you can like pit schools' financial aid packages against each other. And they're, they're not going to get rid of your acceptance. They're not, they, they, most of the time will be like, okay, here's some more money or like we'll just match that. And I think students do not realize that enough and don't take advantage of that enough. I think it's one of the things that I say most often. And that works like for any kind of schooling. Like I did that for my undergrad. I did that for medical school. And like in both cases, like they gave you more money. They gave like, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars at the end of the day. So yeah, students are really concerned about how do I pay for, for college? I think was something that I was a little surprised that like bubbled up as like conversation very quickly. And then, so I think I'll just quickly conclude with the book for today called This is a Moment by Micah Player. And I think one of the, the key messages of it that I think I love so much is that it both talks about like, what are these like moments that we think about like in the future, about like how the world will be, how our lives will be? And says that those moments are important, but just as important, or like what are the moments that like we're experiencing like right now? And how do we also tap into those moments? So I think there is, I think some of the discussions we had today, I think were very, like reminded me of that. Like there is this tension of like, how do we make things better now? How do we think about the experiences that students are having now? Also like, but what is this like moment and place that we dream about in the future when it comes to like our school district? And not putting one of those above the other because all moments are moments that we get to experience whether we're doing that now or in the future. So I think this, this book has been, I think, really good for reminding us of the great things we're doing now and the great things that we'll do in the future. And so moving on to the last two pieces, our future meetings are on June 11th and June 25th. And then that brings us to adjournment. I know Vice President Rocha wanted.
I have a question that if we could all close this meeting in, is the loss of our supervisor, Federal Glover, is pretty hard for all of us because he had six terms. He was our representative. We, we're lucky that we have two actually, but even one of them. And he passed away this last Sunday, I think it was. And I just want to close this meeting in his honor.
And then maybe before we close, I'll give a moment in case anyone else feels called to say anything. And you don't have to. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to conclude the meeting in honor of the late supervisor, Federal Glover.
I second the motion.
I think we need a, for someone to make the, the motion.
Oh, I make the motion.
And we'll cite a second by Trustee Brown. All in favor say aye. Aye. And, and anyone opposed? And the meeting is adjourned at 9:42.